Five eighty-seven. And we have paid Manning Regional forty-two thousand. And Plains area got a little fifteen hundred for some.
That was for a training.
A training, because a couple, three years ago, before Manning came in, I know you guys had said, the motion was something up to ten thousand dollars or something. And I think this training is like a staff training. The original amount we gave them, probably at least a year ago, maybe a little more than a year ago, was they sent someone
For Jill.
To a training, or yeah, that's right, Jill Wunder. And anyway, so it's.
New Orleans, I think, where she had to go.
Yeah. So yeah, that gives you an idea. So as far as spending authority, we still, there's still sixteen thousand on the books that we could spend yet.
That we have authority.
If we had another request, or if you just want to fulfill more to Manning, you just have to say, and I can let Taya know how much it is, and she can put that request into us as you know, kind of an invoice type situation, so.
But I'd like to kind of stay, stay current with this, and we keep spending down, so we don't end up with a huge bill.
Right, but some counties haven't spent. It's like, why are you not spending? There has to be an opportunity in your county, or at least a place that your county residents use for certain, those kind of services or something.
We can't be the only county that's got issues with opioid.
Oh, no, no.
Well, they wouldn't be getting it if they didn't, so.
So is the top portion, Terry, that's the money coming in?
That's revenue. Those two large portions at the top are money coming in, the top ones, the actual settlement. Stuff. And some of it, you can tell that McKinsey opioid. That's a very specific settlement. I should have tried to find my spreadsheet that shows all the different agencies that are part of the settlement and their.
And then do we have, we put that money evidently in an account, and every month it draws interest?
Yes.
And we add the interest to it.
Yep. So basically, we have sixteen thousand making.
Right, spending authority.
This year.
Yeah.
That's on top of what we already promised to.
Right.
Taya.
Next year, if you wanted to.
Right, we could look in the book and see what.
What we're supposed to get?
What is.
And the fifth of August, we should get.
Plug some numbers in there.
Some more from the national.
Yep, you're right. So it is, it's in Department ninety-nine. On my front page of ninety-nine. And this is a small chunk towards the bottom that is Fund Thirty-five. And it shows, I penciled in sixty thousand again. But, I mean, we can make that more, it's not a levy. And we wouldn't spend more than what the fund has in it ever, even if you say budgeted an eighty thousand dollar spending authority out of there, we would not ever spend more than the fund has, right?
So if we put nothing in there, and we got sixty thousand, we couldn't spend that.
We'd have to do a budget amendment to spend it, or spending authority.
It would be in reserves, and reserves to pull it out, yeah.
Well, it says separate funds, so it's in even a different reserve fund.
No, it ain't even in the normal.
Not in general, no, it's its own fund.
It's its own opioid fund.
So we could track it.
Having it more than what we bring in doesn't hurt us at all.
No, because it's not a levy.
Because it's not a levy.
I ain't seen anybody at this board waste money yet, so I don't think that would matter.
So almost, right, since we don't know how much comes in, it almost makes sense to move it up to eighty thousand.
I know, at least, I mean, I know what you guys are thinking.
Well, you're not gonna overspend, because you can always spend what's in there.
Right. Exactly. I'm fine with that.
I am too, eighty is fine.
Yep.
Knowing the need and knowing what it's there for, or what, or we can't take.
And then we don't have to hesitate when.
You know, she talked about this new thing coming, I mean, and that's for juveniles. So that might be very, something that we really want to support. I mean, we don't know what it is yet. But it might be something that we, if it's going to be helping especially juveniles with dependency issues, it might be really something we want to support, you know?
And even if we put eighty in, whatever that amount is, we know that fifty percent's gonna go to Taya.
Yep.
And then you could.
And you, we could do more than fifty percent if you wanted to.
I'd like to stagger it a little bit, if we can, in case something happens here, let's say that they want to have.
And we can pay again, and later in the year, if there's still.
That's what I'd like.
We even like right now.
Money isn't requested.
If you decided to do sixteen, or whatever, you can always go back and give that.
Yep.
Yep.
Ever request another whatever's left, or at least a portion of that?
Let's just say that with our new Crawford County Community Services building, we have a place to hold some meetings, so that we didn't have to drive. We needed something for that, we'd have some bunnies to get something going, and Edison again.
I think we gotta try to find ways to help something get kickstarted back in town.
I do too, on our.
I mean, if it's that hard for her to get them in.
Our county seat.
Think about how many, you know, how many, how many of ours aren't making it in that we might, if we had a program here. At least for the kids.
So I'd like to save a little in case something does come up.
Wonder where the hospital gonna do something?
You know, that's where the Medicare, Medicaid spending comes in.
He hates Medicaid. That's because they never get a good reimbursement back from Medicaid. So that's probably one of the reasons they avoid things like this.
So we've only made one payment?
I don't blame her. And you get paid, you can't bear to die.
But we've only made one payment to MRHC this year.
This year.
But we made.
We made one a year ago.
So.
And that was bigger than this one? That was bigger than the.
The remaining of those funds, I mean, I know our spending authority is sixty.
That's still in that fifty-one thousand, the fund balance.
The fund balance is fifty, but we only have spending authority for sixteen.
Correct.
So you see where I'm going with this?
And this eighty, that eighty next year will help to spend down that balance. And even, because you can see that we've collected in just under thirty thousand dollars. So that would bring us to right at eighty, eighty-one.
So even if you spent the whole sixteen, you're still gonna have.
We're still gonna have.
Fifty-one in your, well, no, but.
We wouldn't, but.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
In your fund balance going, rolling into next year's, right, whatever we receive.
You know, let me ask you a question, if we gave ourselves.
So we'll continue to grow.
Spend eighty, and there was only seventy-nine thousand in there.
We'd only spend seventy-nine thousand.
Exactly, so.
We can't overspend the fund.
Yeah. So what's the difference if it says eighty here?
Right, it doesn't.
You know?
For this one, it doesn't, because it's not a levying fund.
You're not hurting your taxpayer.
So where I guess where I'm going with that, you could spend down your full spending authority, and it's still, the fund is still gonna grow, because we have more than what we.
Yeah, and you can see it's earning a good amount of interest every month.
I mean, pretty decent.
Worth loading.
That's nice.
Money's nice.
Yeah, I like interest. If it's a good number, anyway.
I'm good.
I guess it's kind of up to you guys.
They're so stingy.
Is eighty where you want to stay, you think, or what do you?
I'm happy with eighty.
Yeah.
Eighty's good, I wrote it down with a pen.
Oh, serious business.
Then for this year, you guys wanna hit that sixteen?
Did it jump?
Yep.
Give it to Taya.
Yep.
Yes.
I don't, I'm not gonna say, because I'm on that board.
She's helping our Crawford County citizens, something that there's a great need for, and that's what this one is.
Well, I wrote eighty in. What are you talking about?
There's currently sixteen thousand dollars.
Available now.
Spend now, this year.
Is any of this, does any of this, you, hold yours a minute, is any of this available, like, towards the horse thing? Or is that different?
Horse thing.
Jeds, stable.
I don't know, that's not opioid.
That's not opioid, okay, I didn't think I could.
We gave them twenty-five thousand, that was ARPA funds.
And I was just asking that before I said yes, I think we should give this all.
Oh, no, that's more mental health loss.
It's a mental health.
Yes, D, not.
Not, but not from.
Not drug.
And they actually met with MRHC, so you know, that they, that there's something as far as mental health recovered, that there's talks about that.
Okay.
Now, it's just huge, but.
That's great.
Grieving.
That's why I was asking, that's why.
That's a good survey.
I just wanted to ask that before I agreed to anything else, I just wanted to check. Because there were the, we don't have that many mental health helpers around right now.
Hell, that's true, no.
Certainly not that many that help with drugs.
Off to them, yeah. Yep. And I just handed out the ARPA spending. I penciled in that twenty-seven thousand one oh eight, that's another bill from JP Electric, that was wiring, that they did over in that building to accomplish some of the AC stuff. How are you?
Hey Chuck.
Wiring, that's somebody got that.
We're down to eighteen thousand.
Yeah, it's getting down there.
That's good.
Do you have anything special when it gets to zero? You have to send in a report.
It's all spoken for, even that eighteen thousand.
Pulling on it every year, no, I don't think you're done.
Not once you hit zero.
I don't know, no, I don't know.
Was that eighteen thousand spoken for?
Yeah.
Harry Dine's spoken for.
It's spoken for, it's not spent yet.
What's, where's that going?
It's, still, that project's not done yet.
Oh, so it is going over there?
Yeah, probably. I mean, we, I don't think we've gotten all our plumbing, I don't know if we've gotten all our plumbing bills. Because JP's just getting caught up from his billing.
What we'll get yet is, Totten now has to hook the natural gas to the generator.
Oh, yeah.
Be there. There'll probably be some more electrical for hooking the generator up and testing it, and all those things, probably. And then we do have our heat cleaning in the process right now. So that'll have to happen, and then you can jump up to, I don't know, get in the store room, so it's ready for fully celled stuff.
In some cast out chunks?
They, Pam.
I just think all of ours is spoken for in paper, and that's one of the things that Elon's team was talking about, scrapping back ARPA dollars and them type of things, that have assigned somewhere. If you haven't got it spoken for, they'll take it back.
Yeah.
Can you read the strategy?
They're gonna move. And I'll take one.
EMA must kind of get some stuff, and that's some stuff goals, but I think he's gonna lose that chair, or you'll go flying.
You don't play so well.
It's not the flight, it's the landing.
That needs, that needs to be just.
Seven ninety-five.
Emergency management?
Emergency management.
For towers?
That went to the towers one.
When do they want to start moving out?
So that when they were done, their objective was, when the towers are done, there's no taxes. I'm hoping that's still the case.
How much of that is still in there?
That's spent.
That's spent.
Those are all spent dollars.
But I mean, the seven ninety-five, since we moved it to.
It's.
EMA, that's been scrapped. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
I will, alright.
Hello?
Yeah, I think with the monies that nine-one-one's throwing in that, I think everything's covered. That'll be in August, that'll be a and it'll just be in a regular maintenance. Normal work, they're, they're, the cost of doing this.
Well, should we do Department fifty-one? That sounds good to me. Go down our line for Chuck's here for two.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Area fifty-one.
Pretty likely, I guess, follow this one?
Yeah. What you.
It's solid, follow this one. Same period, just people breaks it out.
Chuck, sign the same form, you know, for the. Too bad it's a popular one. This is all colors, so I'm tired. Anyway, you've been helping Terry get this. If you look up top, actual twenty-two, you find out we must be on the same page.
Actual twenty-two. Are you on that one?
Autopsies at the top.
Okay, that's one I.
Yep, I'm on that.
Otherwise, I think, you know, I would go across the top, and actual twenty-two, that means we know what's actually in there. Actual twenty-three, actual twenty-four. Now, reestimate, we gotta get some new numbers in there, because that's our estimate was, but we know there's changes in this fiscal year, right now, so that's where all the new numbers will go. And proposed, what the department has turned in so far, or I mean, this is just for department decision. So proposed, the department's budget will be. And I say proposed, is hoping to I got, we had that wrote down by the service area. The backside is just more detail.
Going down, there's domestic abuse and sexual assault for seven thousand dollars, and it's done it for three years. That was the lady who came in and was like, hey, sorry, I haven't been here for three years, but now I want money.
Yep, yeah.
Buildings. All that stuff, yeah.
Were we gonna give her seven thousand? Because that's service overlap with Council Against Domestic Abuse?
Do you want to start, start up top and work away more?
Yeah, yeah, I was just going out, and we can start where I topped here.
Autopsy, there's an unknown, so I don't know, so I've been with him, but you can see, because history on it, and how much it went up in twenty-four, on forty-five thousand dollars.
A lot more autopsies, didn't they?
That's how.
Do we have more people that died of mysterious causes, or?
Unattended deaths.
Unattended death. Or mysterious.
I mean, I don't know if you have a couple more anymore.
Well, I was, I noticed in our.
Where are we at now?
Eight, sorry, autopsy.
Yeah, we've only spent seventeen-nine current year.
For twenty-five.
Of the twenty-five.
But like, our last, our last expense, like, from Michelle's stuff this week, that probably hadn't gone there yet. I seen where there was a bunch on there for autopsies. I'm gonna guess that might have been that infant over in Charter Oak, because there was stuff investigative stuff, does that all go underneath that autopsy stuff? Because it kind of looked like it was all the.
I don't know.
Because there was investigation stuff, so.
This is a week ago.
Or there was an investigator?
Soon to get to.
Well, that's been a couple weeks.
Kind of, you know, that could be.
Well, for seventeen, we're halfway.
I'm just saying, that was, there'd be more stuff.
Thirty-four. Well, yeah, seventeen, that was printed one-twenty-two, so.
Okay.
That was a week ago, and there is twenty-nine forty-two in expenses in Department fifty-one. Some of that's.
Still a long one, who's gonna die?
Right, right.
You're just.
If we only knew.
Yeah, well, I don't really know.
What do you want to?
Start moving differently.
In a hurry, huh?
I have to tend tomorrow to the last day anywhere.
It's all the safe. To go to thirty or thirty-five, or is it forty-five a fluke deal?
Probably. I go back quite a ways, if they're not on here, but I know, it's never been that high before, I don't think.
Why did we do that, then?
Why did we do what?
An actual.
That's what's actually.
Well, that's the actuals, yeah, you're right.
We spent twenty-four's over, yep. Our fiscal year twenty-four's.
Yeah, let's hope that was a fluke.
Should we go with thirty?
Doesn't matter to me.
Thirty, just because.
Go to thirty, just in case?
I'd say so.
We don't spend it four days ago.
Sorry, I didn't do much reading right on the side there.
We got it.
It's because I'm sure the medical examiner's charge is probably going up also, so if we get, you don't have the same number of autopsies, probably.
It costs more money.
Right. Twenty-three was twenty-eight thousand.
I put it right next to thirty K.
Sign you then.
Did we probably have to make a budget amendment, and that was part of it for that, that year? I bet we did.
West Central, four thousand.
That was their request.
Request.
Of course, you don't have to do it, of course, none of, you know, none of the, pretty much, you don't have to do any of the requests. But we have for a number of years, and.
The daycare, though, we're in our twenty-eighties, so.
Yep.
That's what you want, split up, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's Craig's favorite meeting.
Let's pay it off.
About thirty seconds.
Paid off now, so we don't have that bond payment anymore, right?
Right, but we still.
Have maintenance.
Towards maintenance.
There's a ton of that.
And that hasn't changed, they haven't talked about changing that dollar amount, have they?
Now the carpets and the roof.
They're actually doing pretty well financially, this, this year, we're doing better than last year, and that's, we raised the rent on everybody.
Oh.
So that's how, we haven't raised the rent since we started. So we needed to.
Yeah, that was long overdue, wasn't it? I don't, I guess I kind of knew that.
I know, I remember.
Talking about that one time.
Going to that, domestic abuse and sexual assault.
That was another request.
That's at fifteen, that's gone up from.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Yeah, I was trying to find.
Do them two overlap then, like Dave asked?
I don't know, I just didn't like that she hadn't been in those three years, and also was, I'm asking for money.
Well, I almost feel like she came because it's such a dire need, you know, they were trying to get along without it, now, you know, Crawford County's had quite a few, you know, and.
Nice to know what is the difference between those two. Do they go to different organizations? Okay.
Yep, they're two different organizations.
Okay.
That provide similar services, I think, but I don't, I, they both came and spoke to you guys.
They did, they did.
And they both?
Yeah.
Okay, you all right?
I would hate to cut short on that, and that'd be a place to go, because if, if these providers are saying it's an issue in our community.
It's an issue in our community.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine. And you spring, and you.
Right, bringing it up.
I know, we have to ask the questions, but.
Right, three dollars and fifty cents alone brings about so much money.
That's so. Where, I.
Just saying that, I mean, you do what you gotta do, because we do have ways, but.
Do you want to take each?
We're back in twenty-two, that they may ask for five.
I'm not saying that, I'm just telling you the facts.
That's all we want.
You all right?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you were losing it. Were you? Oh, thanks, Chuck, I haven't seen you in so long. We're good. So that one, so, yeah, that request was for fifteen, I was trying to find the paperwork, and it's not, it's not finding me, frankly. And then that next one is seven.
We did trim back that one to thirteen last year, and I think I remember that discussion too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the one, something last year.
Yeah.
Were we working three percent there, is that what we were doing there, cutting it back?
I remembered, I don't know why.
Do you want to keep that back at thirteen and take the other one to five? Instead of the seven? Is that what you're trying to, trying to have us pick up?
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything.
I'm just suggesting that they hadn't been here for a long time.
Right.
And we have some, another line item that is domestic council against domestic abuse, I, I just don't know myself, what the overlap is.
I would love to be able to explain the difference in.
And I get it, I'm with you, there's a need for it. And I'm, I'm fine leaving it where it's at, too, I mean, we can always, we have to go back later.
Prose tons. Prose, or it's necessary, needed, I should say, it's needed.
But like Terry said, three fifty only goes so far, right?
Three fifty only goes so far.
Our, our general basic of three fifty.
Oh, gotcha. You know, we gave thirteen last year, and I didn't have anybody get cranky.
No.
I suggested we go thirteen and five. Take, take each one back to, you know, stay wherever we can, and give it that a try, and.
Couldn't.
Take them back thirteen and fif- and five?
And five.
Okay.
Just because there's a long list to go here yet.
Yeah, well, like Terry said, let me go so far.
I know, she has to remind us.
I'm sorry.
Is it transit bus, is that kind of actual expenses, why it's such a odd number?
Yes, we get that request from Region Twelve. Yeah, and it's a calculation that they use per capita, per. Find that one, I know I have that one.
How, how much, Dave, do you know this? Like, you know, Smith, these buses, one of the big things would be like Monogram hauling people down to Harlan, these buses. Do some Monogram have a a, some, an adequate fee to participate in that, or is that a free ride?
Everybody pays a dollar.
There, there, it's subsidized, but there's a fee.
Okay. I mean, I get the reason we're, we, we want this in the community, I mean, we'd like to see more people coming in from outside. But you're gonna have a two-way street, I know there's some that even get all over that.
But it ain't like it's, and Ida Groves.
She's, and it's our printer in the.
And, and you know.
They all made out there at Meriton.
Oh, no, there's a cost to it.
But I think that.
But there is a cost.
I don't know exactly what that is, but I know there's cost.
Maybe it's a dollar each way, maybe?
Well.
What?
That's what they pay, so there's a revenue. But I think this is two dollars and fifty cents.
No, it's okay.
For two, two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's for meal.
Another online.
Congregate meals.
That's for the senior center, it's the only place in Crawford that does congregate meals. And they're also supported by the Elder Bridge.
So that's somewhere they gotta have a match to get money from some others?
I don't know.
Because you think at ten dollars a meal.
I know.
Doesn't go very far.
It doesn't go far.
It doesn't.
But we fund Elder Bridge, who also does, you know.
And a lot of it's volunteer, you know, the people throw in it and.
I was gonna say two fifty, you know, they're not.
I mean, and they have it, unless I remind them to request it, they don't, you can see we haven't spent it.
I think we should just leave it there, with two fifty there.
Alright, now, then we get to the transit bus stuff that Craig was talking about, and he's looking at that report, the request that they make. And it's just very specific, it's based on a percents per mile, or.
Based on our population.
Population, that's what it is.
Times whatever, a number that they came up with.
Yeah.
Ninety-six cents per capita for six-member county, so every county pays ninety-six cents per.
Per cash.
Which comes to fifteen thousand eight sixty-four, I guess that's the next one, that's how it came, fifteen thousand eight sixty-five.
And then there's that.
And the other one was nine thousand seven forty-nine seventy-five, which is why it's ninety-seven.
Right, because we don't budget cents.
However you spell cents.
I don't know. Sense, or?
Sense or cense?
Sense.
Sense, right.
I was tracking, yeah.
Remember, RLF matching funds is up to fifty.
So why did that double?
What are we looking at?
The Region Twelve.
RLF.
Matching funds.
Revolving loans.
Was twenty-five thousand. Now it's fifty.
Fifty's a different line. Fifty's a miscellaneous line, actually. It's on here for the matching, but it's on the budget, it's the.
I think that's wrong.
Yeah. No, I think this is, this is the fifty thousand that we give to the city for the remainder of.
Miscellaneous, is that where you got it on, on here?
The wellness center.
So the fifty, that's not, okay.
You promised them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Over such and such a time.
Over such and such a time, we gave them initially a hundred thousand, and the remaining hundred and fifty thousand would be over three years, this will be the second commitment.
I think we should not be.
We just have to have a, have an idea what it was.
We're on the right, on Region Twelve.
And I didn't supposed to say Region.
It's on that line, on this form, but it's on a miscellaneous line.
Bottom, bottom of the page.
In the book.
In the book.
No, I'm not doing it, looking at both at the same time, am I supposed to be?
Yes.
Well, whatever.
Very bottom one.
Very bottom line.
Okay.
Maybe hit Dave with the ruler. Too hard. It's not too hard, you did it.
Oh, after pointing to it.
And then you took it.
Gotcha.
So yeah, that's what that is.
Do we have anything for Region Twelve matching fund revolving, is that a revolving?
We don't have it. Any more.
We can crop, just put miscellaneous.
Do we have?
Right, there's our health.
Yeah, I don't know if.
So we're putting, what do we put in there, the revolving loan fund, do we have to add to that every year?
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous wellness.
This puts on.
They don't ask for that every year.
So we're taking the revolving loan fund thing off? So we're taking the re- revolving loan fund thing off?
Yes, yes. You're white out.
Fifty is.
I'm not, I'm not involved with it, longest Terry's.
Goes to the city of Dennis.
We just need to do that one more time.
Yes. And then you also need to do that eight, eighty-three, three thirty-three, which is the three-way with Dennis and DMU in the county. But I don't know when you wanna do that, I think DMU's waiting till the building's more in a completed state.
That was out of ARPA funds.
No, will not be out of ARPA funds, as you can see, the balance of ARPA funds is almost.
I thought I've already spoken to her in there, I guess I thought I really.
Don't, don't.
Seem to be saying this.
They are spent, except for eighteen thousand dollars. Will not be ARPA funds.
Good, you keep going down?
Yeah, fifty, you know.
Yeah. And just needs to be a miscellaneous line, or wellness center, or whatever.
And I, I have, I saw, and I can't go from one to the other, I have four hands.
We've got you put miscellaneous wellness.
We scratched it. I thought it was white out.
There might be some up here.
If we could get it all back from Dave.
I don't have, you had it in your drawer.
I don't know.
Alright.
I'm good. Revolving environment and education?
Yep. Oh, yeah.
The region twelve housing grant, according to the sheet we got here, they're asking for ten thousand, we have it at ten-five.
Hey Nate.
What do we do for Elder Bridge?
Nate, you there?
Elder Bridge.
We stayed twelve.
Is there another?
Yep, that's a.
Is there, can I saw? Is there another five hundred dollars on there?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
Not from the one yesterday, I think I just put it on there.
It says this, the county will be billed for those serviced on a quarterly basis.
Let me.
Five hundred.
Yeah, let me talk to Michelle.
Service of Western Iowa, okay?
With Chuck.
We got a little bit. Estimate this cost to be five.
I'll add on Shell's sheet.
Mowing.
Oh. I wonder if I should put that on with that ninety-seven fifty, the five hundred dollars on there, cause that ninety-seven fifty does.
Okay.
I think they bill that quarterly.
Or is it the fifteen, let me look at. Six hundred counties. I guess it doesn't matter where it's at.
Alright, I missed.
As long as it's budgeted for.
Five hundred, right, it doesn't matter where we put it, that's fine, leave it at ten-five.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the housing grant, right?
Yeah.
How come you took out um CDC and?
I didn't have the numbers before I had entered this stuff in, but now.
Are they the same?
Now I do.
Fifteen seventy-five, I mean, or sixty.
Well, this one, this is the seventy-five hundred. Do I, I thought I had the tourism one, or the.
CDC.
CDC, oh yeah, I do, I do, thank you.
I'll leave it the day you came.
Fifty, that's what he requested, fifty-five hundred, or fifty-five thousand, sorry.
We gave him fifty last year.
He didn't have a request in last April. Cause he didn't know to do it, remember?
Yep, I remember.
Yeah, you're right.
Let's just do fifty.
What do you mean? He didn't know to do it.
It was his first year.
So we just penciled something in.
We just, we just paid, country always did, we never requested it, technically requested it.
Yep.
We put fifty in.
Now he is requesting, he's requesting fifty-five, huh?
Is that what the city's doing? Do we know?
We don't know what.
I do not.
Yes, yes.
I'd say fifty.
Only fifty, that's what we did last year.
Yeah.
What's the extra tourism for five hundred, reset at eight hundred, what's the difference between?
I was tired, do they have something coming up more that they're?
Well, I mean, it's like everybody, their budgets are tight, so. You know, I mean, it's, he's trying to get more out of more vendors. Think about a lot of our businesses now are the Latino types, and I don't know that they had these kinda programs where they came from. You know, I'm sure they aren't necess- now, some are, joining, but they're, they're not.
Well, then they come around and ask.
Well.
So what do we do there on the, just flat old?
What is the difference between Crawford County, what, rep to tourism versus just tourism?
I was asking that.
The tourism go to CDC, or is it, is there a separate tourism?
There is, there's a, there's a separate director and they do.
That going towards my ass salary?
Uh, goes towards.
No, it goes to.
Amy.
Or Ta- okay.
Used to be a.
That goes.
Are you talking about the seventy-five hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the five hundred.
You might be talking about the next line down, that's like five hundred dollars.
I'm talking about that now too.
And I don't know what that is.
I can't remember what it is.
I can't remember it either. Why it wouldn't all just be in one line?
Cause it doesn't go to the CDC, that's why, partially.
Some publication that we've.
I feel like it.
A publication that we've put our.
I can find out, I'll find out.
Alright, I know.
Sorry.
I'll put a question mark by that.
I know.
Fair?
What do we, what do we?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna find out exactly what that's for, I put a question.
You wanna put in eight hundred or five hundred?
Totally, no, I'm putting a zero.
To tribute government or tourism, I don't know what that means.
Fair.
Did you make the decision on fifty, fifty-five?
But I did fifty, I'm fine with that.
I did fifty.
Fifty it is.
I did seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five.
And I'm waiting to see what that is, fair, twenty?
Twenty and ten?
I did talk to Leonard Ling the last time. Um, they're working over the bathrooms, they did say they have projects with the capital improvements, so they greatly appreciate that, but um he just said that they're using it.
Absolutely, they'll use it. But. There are old buildings that they're trying to. So I'd say twenty and five?
Yeah.
What's that?
On the fair.
Twenty?
Well, twenty goes to the fair itself, and then there's, we had ten for capital improvements for the fairgrounds.
Okay, that was like for the bathroom and stuff?
Bathroom, and then. They have a list of projects.
Stalls.
I know they wanna work over cattle barn and hog barn and.
Five thousand? That worked. Then we got that nice letter from Sarah last year, kind of, you know, explaining it all and asking for a little bit more.
I would keep the twenty at twenty, and if we're gonna cut any, I'd keep it, cut the capital improvements.
That's where I put the five.
Cause that gives them the twenty to operate the fair.
Correct, and we're required to do that.
So you're gonna do that one to five?
Well. What do you think, Charlie?
Seventy-five hundred.
It looks like we did five historically, and then we skipped a year, and then we decided to make that up, so we did ten, kinda make up for the one we missed. So to me, it'd be back to five.
Or seventy-five hundred, if we're trying to help.
I know they're do- I know they're like, you know, what is it, the showville, show stuff, they're trying to get that re- redone.
Bathrooms, um, all sorts of stuff, it's ongoing projects.
It'd be nice to find a bit, a good way to fund that, you know? But you know, it gets used once a year, other than the racetrack. Gets used once to, once a year.
The racetrack.
I think it's like, if you look at like the fairgrounds down in Des Moines, constantly being used for something.
Yeah.
Ain't the whole fairgrounds, but they've got a facility, you know, that's why you'd like to see them having, you know, a nice expo center.
How much does the expo overflow into the fairgrounds?
And they give them a little bit of money.
But I mean, actually, use so, use?
Oh, expo buildings used a lot.
But do they use a lot?
It gets a fair amount of use, it gets a lot of horse.
The horse barns, but then they bring in some of the stalls once in a while.
I guess where I'm going with that, if they're gonna continue to upgrade their stalls, so that the expo uses your ground, I could see.
The expo, I think, kicks money out of for that, for the use of them stalls, for the use of that building.
You wanna do seventy-five hundred?
Well, they didn't ask for any, so I'm not really, you know.
No, no, honestly.
Your, is that yours?
That's.
Committee?
No, I'm, I wanna, I.
What are they saying?
I, he said, well, I didn't get nothing in, they were, they were hoping to get what they got last year. But they didn't submit, and you could say twenty and five.
Twenty and five.
That's what I had written down with my pencil, but I can erase it.
I'm okay with that.
Let's write that in.
I'll write it back.
Twenty and five.
Alright.
So I think we have left just tourism on that one to figure out.
It's getting it looked up, so we can just keep moving on.
Townships say same.
Yep.
It's nice benefit.
I don't know, we need to put numbers in, I don't know, Terry doesn't have one.
I like your.
Get that. Fund for partnerships toward Western Iowa Tourism reasons, so that's a.
Is that that magazine or that um? I just emailed Paul to ask if the CDC pays that, so does do we pay it too, or are we represented through the CDC or?
Me would be, but is it just five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
There'd be something additional for Western Iowa Advantage for.
Yeah, cause we used to have someone um in a different um tourism group that we used to fund to go to some local trainings. And I don't know if that was in the interim of us not having a tourism representative at the CDC, or, you know what I mean, I don't know.
Did Paul request that again? Is that part of?
That's not for Paul.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
It goes to Western Iowa Tourism.
Well, if it's a whole different uh publication, my.
I know, I, I'm, I'm, I asked the question, cause I don't know the answer.
And the more places we can get Crawford County for five hundred dollars, I think that's a good bang for our buck. I'd hate to not be in there, you know, if people are looking for fun things to do.
Put it at five.
Did you do a CDC decision?
We did.
Fifty and seventy-five. And then five hundred for tourism.
Yeah, thank you.
And then we did twenty thousand and five thousand for county fair and capital improvements.
Splitting that up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And five thousand?
Yep.
We lowered it to five.
God, er.
Are you caught up? We're doing good on this, five hundred?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, I think you.
Admin, government service.
My eight-hundred seems good there.
That's our townships, when they meet, they get, I believe they get twenty-five dollars a meeting. So.
They were meeting.
And they only typically meet twice a year, one to budget, one to do their financial report.
You had fifty for flex plan, but now, nothing. Where, underneath the twenty-eight hundred? Just do lines down, flex benefit plan, admin, fifty dollars, and then.
Yeah, we don't. We don't leave anything out of there.
I don't see any.
Can be zero. Labor relations, about fifteen.
What did you wanna do the town, the trustees at? Did you wanna leave it at twenty-eight hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Labor relations, and I don't know if you, we budgeted twenty-five, what we're in the current year, the fiscal year twenty-five, and we haven't spent any of it. But you did some of the negotiating using Colin and not.
Not, that would go towards like Rick Frank when we did this, which we don't.
Or Alers and Cooley.
Alers and Cooley, yeah.
Used more recently. I just reduced it to fifteen hundred, I mean, you still have a couple of union groups, I don't know, I mean, if there would ever be. Yeah, a grievance or something, you might need more than your county attorney to do those personnel matter type things.
I'm fine.
I mean, I don't know.
We don't have secondary roads or landfill to do this, you, cause that was a three-year deal.
Right. Right, I mean, you could make it a little lower if you wanted to, or not have anything in there, I.
Oh, I don't know, I think fifteen's fine, I'm.
Okay.
You know, thousand dollars don't go very far.
No, I know, I know.
Phone calls, you phone calls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that adds up fast.
I'm fine with that, are you gonna?
Same, yep.
And then that seventy-eight hundred is um the jackreed amount.
Okay.
And I can't remember, I feel like we're paying nineteen fifty or something a quarter, or it might not be that, I can't remember what it is.
Fine with that.
Yeah.
Tip of the tongue, we knocked that down to seventeen because.
We're doing Beth Manley, yeah. Yeah, and that's what that contract requires is seventeen fifty, you know? Um, the audit clerical services, that's our auditors that come in and audit us, I mean, we, we've budgeted forty over the last, I don't know how many years. It's good. Yeah, I mean, we could take it down a little bit, but I wouldn't wanna take it down much.
Well, we did thirty-one in twenty-three, twenty-four, and it's, how much yet, these pools has gotta be done in twenty-four, twenty-five?
They were just here, not that long ago, so we haven't.
Is that in here then?
No, we haven't been built for that yet, yeah, so I don't know how much it is.
So it could be in thirties again?
Huh?
In the thirties again, yeah.
Possibly.
So we don't probably wanna go below thirty-five if we didn't over it.
Right.
Thirty-five sounds good to me.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
That guy's quite a guy.
He is a.
Kenny Davis.
Oh, yeah.
Ninety-six-year-old, just had a birthday.
Yep.
He's one of Louise's favorites.
Yeah, he's good. That audit, they wanted to move to thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
And then you go down to the thousand dollars for photocopy, and that's paper.
Okay.
And you buy paper, most of the departments use it.
Magazine videos. Repair, maintenance, photo.
Yeah, that's some of the magazines that, um, it's the, do we wanna do Nate, so is he?
He, no, I, I told him give us fifteen, that's his fifteen minutes.
Okay, it's up to you if you wanna move on to him, and then we can finish fifty-one.
It shouldn't take long.
No, I would think.
Hey Nate, you there?
That way he can get off.
Yeah, so, I'm here.
Are you ready, if we jump to you? Are you ready if we jump to you?
Yeah, I'm ready, my camera doesn't work, uh, my, my computer freezes, so I apologize.
No problem. Uh, Nate's on. They got it in front of the book. CNN. Number three. When I see you. Probation in sixty-one.
Thank you.
Oh. I, I wasn't CNN. Take what, will just be a minute.
Are you good?
Relax a minute, Chuck.
Yeah, relax.
And have a beer.
Huh?
Well, thanks for dinner.
You're gonna finish your dinner, good call.
I already did that, Chuck, so it's not.
Here, Paul. Eat those real chairs.
Nate, we are on your expenditure page to start with.
Okay, I'm there with you. I'm not seeing a whole, I'm not requesting any changes, it looks good, I always appreciate. Um. What you guys do, especially for, uh. For our kids, I mean, in terms of medication, uh, stays in detention, transportation. Um, I do, I do see transportation happen a little more, um, our placements are going down as expected. And, uh, detention stays are, are getting longer. Um, I, I do, I, I try really hard to get these kids in and out of detention, so they're not staying so long. Um, a lot of that you'll see with medication and possibly evaluations, uh, being paid for, when, when we do that. It speeds up stays in detention, so the, the balance there, the given, give and take, uh, balances out, if sometimes probably a little cheaper, but. Um, I think, uh, everything is looking good and, and nothing really. Um, that I'm seeing right now requesting a change.
Sounds good. Is there any?
Hey Nate, is, when I'm looking at your budget, like the twenty-three, twenty-four. Was one eleven, five hundred, and you spent sixty-eight. And then last year was one twenty-one, five, and we're not through the whole year, but so far you've spent fifteen-four halfway through, so you'll double that. I mean, is there a reason you're at where you're at with your numbers?
Let me, one second, where are you looking at, sorry, could you, can you kinda?
Down on the bottom, down on the bottom of the page.
I'm just looking at the, on the bottom of the, of the page that shows the activity from twenty-three, twenty-four. What was budgeted and then what you actually spent, and then twenty-four, twenty-five budget total, and what you've totally spent to date.
I know your totals line.
The bottom line.
Gotcha, so you're looking at the thirty-five oh four? Five thousand, I guess.
No, you look at your, look at your Department sixty-one probation juvenile, juvenile totals. The, the bold print.
Okay, hold on, I'm, I'm wondering if I got the same sheet, hold on.
Right. Could be the difference.
And I know too, Craig.
Is it just because we don't know, cuz you don't know how many kids are gonna be in it, that's where.
You don't, you don't.
You don't.
We had two years in a row, if you remember back with Glenn, that were way, well, we had to do an amendment smaller.
Yeah.
And then it came back down, we had a couple of years under what, like what you're seeing. But we're levying dollars that are just ending up in our fund balance, year after year.
Is this fund balance?
The general.
In general fund?
This is general fund.
Okay.
Which we would have just reserved there if we had to do an amendment because of.
Right.
I mean, this year we could even, I mean.
I wouldn't be afraid of cutting a little.
Cutting down to seventy-five as off of a hundred, cuz we could always amend, cuz it isn't like we haven't been putting a little away.
We've been putting this money, this difference in the general.
The general fund.
It goes back into the general.
We just have, remember, that we have to do an amendment that, you, well, we have to do it.
And then when you, if you have a bad year that needs an amendment, then you reevaluate it, and maybe you re-levee that. You know what I mean? Cuz maybe a cycle starting or.
Happened here, like you said, is we had a couple of.
High years.
So we better get that up there.
Cuz it's not like you're not gonna fund his department, cuz you are. Right.
We don't know what cycles the moons are gonna bring to us.
Right, finding those totals, Nate.
What's that?
Finding those totals.
Uh, well, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I've not seen those totals yet, but I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that this, last year was less than the year before, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, so I think that's just, uh, yeah. I mean, it fluctuates from, from, uh, fiscal to fiscal, but yeah, I, I would, I would be okay with what you guys are saying, that's not, not that I have any say, I mean, as far as what I'm recommending, but that is completely fine. Um, and I agree with it.
Well, here's, here's, here's the thing, Nate, like, in, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, you were budgeted one hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred dollars, and you spent sixty-eight. You know, sixty-eight, five fifty. Right, then last, the, the, this, the last year you, you budgeted, for this year we're on actually, you budgeted one twenty-one, five, and were spent fifteen. Fifteen-five for the half, first half of the year, so if you doubled that, you'd be at thirty thousand, so we're a long ways from one twenty-one, so all we're looking at. Is if we cut that detention monies up at the top where it says a hundred thousand to seventy-five thousand, we wouldn't have to ask the taxpayers for twenty-five thousand dollars. But we do have reserves build up, cuz you see the years that we didn't spend money, them reserves are in our, that, that cash is in our reserves, so if you ended up having to need that twenty-five thousand then. We could go in and do a budget amendment, make sure you got that money, I mean, we're not gonna leave you without money for the kids.
Oh.
No, no, I completely understand that, and that sounds perfect, yeah, thanks for kind of walking me through that, that's, uh, that makes sense, and I think detention. I don't know, we, we've really. We've streamlined detention, um, uh, states on us, or, or cities on, our two cities on us when, when a kid's staying too long, so that's probably a, a reflection of that.
Okay.
So, yeah, no, that's completely fine, and, and completely understand, now, uh, as, as we're, I don't know if you guys remember the diversion program that I talked about, about six months ago.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that, Nate.
Yep, so, so that, that is, that's also a testament too, cuz we're not seeing these kids. When we should be seeing them, in my opinion, we see them too late when they get serious, so I think that's starting to catch up. Um, we're starting to see, we're starting to see more kids come through that have those two or three charges, and it's now getting serious. Uh, if that continues, I'm seeing more detention stays, but yeah, um, but yeah, that's, that, that's kinda, I think we're starting to see a reflection of the diversion program too in that.
Well, give us a heads up if that starts to become the case, I, cuz I know over in Central Iowa, you haven't been, you haven't had any bill over there, and I'm not complaining, trust me. You haven't had any, you were there for quite some time, and I know you like to use that one for extended stays, you told me in the past.
Yep, and I think, uh, I think as time goes on, those kids that are, are high-risk, that we're not seeing right away, will catch up, and I think we'll start to, start, start to use Central Iowa more and more.
Okay, well, let, just kinda keep ahead, gi- give us a heads up if it's starting to look like you're gonna get over that seventy-five, and then we'll, we'll get to working on that.
But yeah, Nate, just so you know, we're gonna cut the hundred back to seventy-five.
Yeah.
And then.
Sounds good.
It's, it's, it'll be there for you if you go over. I mean, we'll.
No, I understand. Nope, completely understand, I appreciate the catch on that too, I, I mean, it's nice to see those numbers decrease in, in some sense, but.
But we, we wanna make sure you got plenty of funds to do your job, but you're also a tax, or you probably like that we didn't tax you for something we weren't gonna actually use.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Nate. Yeah, thanks, Nate.
Alright, thanks guys, you have a good day.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thanks for all you do.
No problem, thanks for all you do, bye.
Bye.
He does really try to work with them kids, and I appreciate that. That's a tough job, boy, I tell you what, some of the ones you see, and I don't know, I've never seen the kids, but some of the charges you see over there in Central Iowa, and I'm sure Kyle sees similar stuff, I'm a listener, so. It's scary when you see a twelve-year-old kid up for murder charges.
Nice thing by Nate, this, I mean, hometown guy, passionate about his job.
Yep. Fears about the kids, he stays invest, he's invested in wrestling program, that's what he's after.
Dark chocolate?
Melting the kids.
Dark chocolate?
Boy, yes, many, much.
Dark chocolate?
Good for digestion.
I know, it's good for ya.
Yeah.
Low sugar.
Actually, Natalie feeds me two of them at night.
Dark chocolates?
Yeah.
Oh.
Cuz it's good for your.
It does, aid digestion?
Good for.
There's my reason.
It's actually, it says probiotic, it's a probiotic.
Oh, nice.
So Terry, then I got a total on the front page, two ninety-eight, three seven seven.
Wow.
Where?
Good.
For, oh, I don't know.
I love.
I've been making most of my notes in here.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, are we good with Nate's, we're not gonna back to seventy-five?
Yes, yeah. He's, he was cool about it.
Yeah, and that makes the most sense, I mean, once you budgeted, over-budgeted for a number of years and that stays in reserves. You know, you just gotta think about making an adjustment, and. Yeah.
That's, that's the only smart way to do it.
Yeah, it is.
We got it there, he needs it.
Yeah.
We can always get him even more if that.
So we're gonna just lower his total request by twenty-five thousand.
Yes, that's fair. Welcome back.
Know if you guys thought or not, but. All, all this is a general basic. That's how you, you know, like, all, those are all general basics, can't you?
Yep.
And you go to the backside. General supplemental, then the towers by, and then, uh, ARPA, wait, no, Terry, I don't have one, thank you.
It's getting threatened now. Yeah, we shouldn't need to budget for it this year, there won't be any dollars left to spend.
I'm probably the only one.
Did we get through, are you guys on page seventy-six? Or, oh, no, I'm sorry, you're on that.
I'm on the backside of this now.
We did the paper, that was a thousand dollars. And then, so next is FICA, and that's township. So it was just figured off that twenty-eight hundred or whatever we budgeted. Yeah, the twenty-eight hundred that was budgeted on that township line, the FICA, I use the percentage that we use for all the employees. Um, and then there's the liability insurance.
Could spend on good.
It's been creeping up, I did, I upped it a little bit more. Yeah, we've been, we've been getting right under the radar under that, on that, and.
I mean, you can see that our policy probably has not changed in the last three years.
No.
Hope it's used for other assets that we have.
No.
The premium.
Right, well, we kind of have, cuz we have. Towers, we, I mean, you know, but some of the, that stuff gets covered under, like, the EMA, they do the boat shed and stuff like that, but. Um. And then, are, does your show the? That's FICA and IFRS. Oh, and then we got revenue.
Which you have zero.
Is that where you wanna go, Chuck?
Yeah.
Revenue. Yeah. Yep.
But you know, if you have.
We looked at, is there work, where is work comp?
It's up, uh, three down, work comp and.
Oh, there it is, my, yeah, ninety thousand, I did up that a little bit, because I know we've had. Um, they'd.
We're back on fifty.
Um, Bill from IMWCA, which is our work comp. Carrier, um, came and talked, we had, we have a little bit of consistency unfortunately in some claims, some work comp claims, so. They were talking about, um. Our mod factor possibly. Changing a little bit. Um, but we're doing a lot of things to improve that, our department heads have gotten our, um, our safety program back up in play, we meet every month, we have a department head meeting. And a safety meeting, and talk about the claims that we've had, and, um, things we can do to make sure that they don't happen again. Um, that kinda stuff, so I was afraid, after having that meeting with Bill, I was afraid that our. Premium might go up. So I just budgeted up by ten thousand, we really, I don't think we've changed our work comp amount for. A number of years, it stayed pretty low, you can see the history on your worksheet that Chuck prepared, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-five thousand, seventy-seven thousand. Um, we've had a good mod factor for a number of years. And got our claims under control and do some things, I know Paul does those orderly safety meetings with his people. And I think conservation attends some of those things.
Maybe ninety is a safe amount to cover any.
I think so, I think it is. Not too high, but.
Eighty-five would probably cut you too tight.
Uh, yeah, I just don't, I don't know.
Nate hits you pretty hard, though, you know, off the landfill ended, boy.
Yeah, you have some consistency out a little bit.
That should bring you hard.
Especially if you have someone that misses time, misses work.
That's expensive.
Yep, so ninety. Move on down. Um, so on your worksheet, the next thing is, um, revenue. And. I don't have much, I don't have anything budgeted in revenue. Yeah.
Got all zeros for that first one.
Yeah.
Then we go back down to tower maintenance fund.
Yeah.
Sure.
The.
Actually, no.
Expenditures, and I just, I. I think I did it this year, and I just kind of replicated. I think we're over-budgeting. I think, I mean, we budgeted like those utilities and radio-related equipment maintenance and radio maintenance, it's been budgeted five thousand, all three line items for the last three, two years. Of history, and nothing's been spent out of there. I mean, we never wanna.
This isn't for EMA though, is it?
No, this is our tower right here.
For this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that comes out of.
This is for the space needle.
No, it's a, there's a tower maintenance fund, yeah, yeah, it's its own fund, so we don't levy for it, the money comes in from, um, rent.
Yeah, the rent, AT&T and.
Right.
And the.
Money and interest.
The.
That's why I wanted to tower.
So we go down one year.
I budgeted sixty-nine thousand for reimbursement to the tower, and that's the rent revenue, and then we also have, um, some interest. That we budget for.
So with our tower fund, is that a, includes all the towers in the county?
No.
Nope. The tower fund just includes.
Just the space needle.
EMA will be all the other towers.
Does all the other one.
Right, is those accessible?
Ridge Road.
I need, I need to run that report, I'll get that report ran, and I'll email that to you guys, so you know.
I didn't know if it just keeps building or if it actually gets.
Well, we've.
Someday we could probably change.
At the very beginning, um, this board wanted to keep that fund at fifty thousand, so whenever it would grow above that, we would transfer that. Where did we put that, Chuck? Did it go? General basic. It would go.
So is revenue more than pays for the expenses?
Yes. Oh, yes.
So do we?
Yeah.
That added.
That's why I don't know if we're budgeting.
I'm a lot of balances right now, dude.
I mean, and, and it's not like this is levied, it's, they're not levy dollars.
Right.
So it's not the same as our general.
We've talked about it before.
You wanna leave it at fifty-one thousand, just so you, you have the expanding authority and.
Right, and right now it's at forty.
It's at forty, I think forty's sufficient.
Yeah.
The, the thing is, is if you'd have, uh, you know, something where, where you'd have a. Engineering issue or something that you'd have to call that, you know, I mean, that could get costly quick.
Right.
You know, I mean, um, if somebody calls and wants to put on. If we would, you know, like, say ATT wanted to expand on there, that, that's happened here recently. You still gotta have our engineer down there, check the load. You know, cuz they'll, their engineer can tell you what they want you to do, but we got our own engineer to make sure, so you gotta pay for that stuff.
Yeah.
And that ain't an every-year thing, but you gotta be prepared for it.
You just don't know what's gonna happen.
This, this, we don't put on the tax asking though.
Right, exactly.
So I mean, it is, it just gives us the authority.
If we needed to pay for vulture pass control.
There you go, perfect.
Boom.
Ding ding ding.
If that ever were to happen.
And now vultures. And you know, really with, so with the situation, you've, you've grown to be in with, uh, with the additional towers, what's? Six other towers besides this one, I think we talked about yesterday. You could consider that those funds possibly, and tell me if I'm wrong, and I'm just shooting from the hip, so, attention for a second. It must be more, um, I was thinking the extra funds, it may be appropriate for those to maybe. And I don't, well, we transfer from, so we transfer from supplemental to EMA, I'm thinking, can, can these e- excess. Funds from the tower maintenance, could, could they transfer to EMA? Because of the unknown expenditures of the new towers.
I would love to leave that alone for a year to see what it's gonna come, what, operating here, to see what it's gonna cost, apart from this. Monstrous.
No, because.
Just go six EMA.
Leave them six alone to see what their expenditures are like, cuz even like the Ridge Road does generate income. It's just got the National Weather Service in, but this one does a lot of different things, so I'd like to see what their costs.
And I'm not saying move the expenditures over, I'm just saying the excess funds.
Oh.
Gathered by the revenue that we earn on these, instead of leaving them here, or even moving them to the general fund, they get moved to disaster services. And then are available, and then we can adjust that supplemental transfer.
You actually lower your levy because you're taking the revenue directly to EMA.
That's, that's actually a good idea.
Yeah, no, I like that.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Well, I'll take a look at that and get you those numbers so we can, you can figure out.
And see if.
I mean, and it, you might only be talking fifty thousand a year or something, but it might be enough to help with some of those. I mean, and you might only be talking fifty thousand a year or something, but it might be enough to help with some of those. Extra expenditures that you're not even aware might happen with the new towers and so.
I don't know what we're gonna. And it's fifty thousand dollars, we don't have to tax.
And our general fund doesn't need to grow more. I mean.
Way to think it all the way through.
Good to talk it out. We're just gonna let you keep talking.
That all looks good then. We're good then, we do have Colin here.
So what else you got Chuck? Anything? Yeah, yeah, we're on a timeline, so. Yeah, thank you Chuck.
Many thanks. That's the first time that's happened?
You can really finish it this time?
Keeps longer than you get to eat, I might have it gone.
Thank you sir. We got your number.
Always appreciate it.
Number four. Number four.
It's a, it's a, yeah, it's quite the chair. Chuck, you got spectacles up here. They're dirty.
Ooh, you've wrote a book.
About criminal procedures, that's never good, is it?
I think they actually have drama classes when you go to law school.
It's all about presentation. Gotta win the jury over.
Is that Chuck's water maybe? No, all your props to come off.
I'm overloading myself. Afternoon, everybody. I'm sure you guys have settled into a, a routine, so I'll just follow your guys' lead and.
Well, you may not like our routine, we've made a lot of red marks.
As is your job, so that's not surprising to hear.
I guess anything that.
I'm gonna pull up, sorry. My internet. I'm gonna pull up what I. Of course, I had this all on my desktop pulled up. But now I switch over to this machine, gotta find it all over again. Expenditures. And I have notes. So what's the, I mean, how do you want me to go about this? Just start?
Just go through anything that. Increases, where you're at, closer we're gonna.
Okay, so.
Salaries and all of that.
The salary, of course, will be changed however you guys change it.
So you got, we did twenty eight hundred for.
I have not inputted the change. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I expect to put in the change, whatever you guys put it at, but I, I mean, I didn't make it. And resubmit or anything. Right, and that number is still just, it was more of an advisory than, it certainly wasn't a final vote because. It was a discuss only and not a discuss and take action, so, I mean, we can expect it to be around there as my understanding, but it wasn't it. So yeah, of course my salary will. Yeah, that Kyle brought in that, the morning of, and we kind of hustled through it and. Found that Terry has to get some notices out and then the compensation board makes a report. As Craig pointed out, not necessarily come again, but at least submit the report and then.
You get one notices out, what do you mean?
Yeah, we, last week, we talked about the timing of when the Board of Supervisors. Can hear the numbers and feel the numbers from the compensation board and that couldn't happen.
Your regular budget hearing, right? Is that what you're talking about?
So we'll just have to have that, confirm recommendations during that regular budget.
And I only brought you up Terry because it was referenced in the code, it's some mailing that you have to get out to the taxpayers and that happens in March sometime, so, yeah. Okay, so, one of my biggest expenditures I'm proposing for this next year is an increase from Martha and her salary. And this is gonna be a moving target because it. Is so dependent on what my final number is going to be. But I would make a note that. My office does not have, nor I don't think has it ever had an eighty five percent employee. So I don't have deputies in my office. Martha's considered an assistant prosecutor and under the county attorney's code. It accounts for having assistant prosecutors. They're kind of operate the same as a chief deputy in the other offices, but. It's just different and it's specifically accounted for in the Iowa code section, dealing with county attorneys. And in that code section, it caps any assistant prosecutor at eighty five percent. So they're capped, just like other deputies are capped, it's the same number. You know, this, just in a different code section. And so I, I want to bring her up. I want to bring her up to eighty five percent. And so I have a bunch of different numbers crunched here. And actually, when I was doing my hypothetical numbers, I envisioned a twenty two hundred dollar raise for me, but. David, I think you're right, I think it was a different number that was discussed. So I used the wrong number in mind. Yeah, so I used the wrong number in mind, but, you know, the final number is. It's close enough, so. At eighty five percent of my salary. That'd be with a twenty, assuming a twenty eight hundred dollar raise from where I'm at now. Would be hundred and twelve five, hundred thirteen?
Hundred and twelve, six oh four.
Six oh four. So that's what I am proposing for her. Now that's what I wanna see for her.
I guess. You did a bump up to get her up because we had her last year. Going to be a judge. Going forward. Just speaking out loud, would you always keep her tied to you as eighty five percent?
She can't go any higher. Eighty five's her cap. So currently she's at seventy four percent of my salary, I think, if I. If I did that math right, which, you know, I'll never claim. I'll never claim to be good at math.
Still any concern that she would go, or looking elsewhere?
I mean, yeah, I mean, past applications have gone out. I, I will say that I, I don't know of any that have gone out recently. But, you know. Even as a county attorney. If, it is a, it's been a natural leap. For county attorneys to become judges. I mean, Judge Schumacher did it, Judge Saylor did it. And so it's a, it's a natural pipeline from a prosecutor to, to the bench. And it comes with a healthy increase in pay. I think district court judges make around a one fifty, one forty. District associate judges, which is typically juvenile court, make around probably one forty, one thirty.
Judges do?
Yeah, these are the judges, yeah. Chief judges, I think, making the one seventy fives. There's only one chief judge per district. And that's just, I don't, don't quote me on that, but that's at least not the chief judge position. And so, I mean, we're just dealing with numbers that we can't as a county, especially rural county, ever match. And my, my salary is actually capped. I have a cap on my salary that I think is. Eighty five percent of the chief judge. I think, and that's for any county attorney, and I, I. It's been a while since I looked that up and I'm nowhere, I'm nowhere near that.
Polk County Attorney's paid like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I think the chief judge for Polk County probably makes.
Okay, so that, they're compared to that.
Yeah, yeah, for that, she judges that district, yeah.
Probably involved in that cost of living for the area, high cost area.
Oh, sure.
That would be my guess.
So Colin, concerning salaries, does that, what, what you have down here for your help, will that change based on. What your number is or not? Will that number stay the same?
I was, you know, I anticipated this question. I will say that. I submitted a budget that is more, I mean, there are some changes we'll go over on some of them that. I have some updates since I submitted it, but.
Cause that's about a thirteen percent increase.
And so I'm not saying that that number is set in stone. But that's the number I would like to see. And just for some comparisons. And I will. I'm gonna be long-winded, I'm sorry. I drew comparisons. Amy Piper did a very nice workup. She sent it to the board, she sent it to all our elected officials, department heads. Kind of showing, going back to twenty eighteen, I believe. Kind of the bumps in people's salaries since then. She even did a whole other section about, after the compensation board met about. What the anticipated raises would be, especially, you know, especially important for those offices that have. Seventy percent employees, seventy five percent employees, eighty percent. And whatever the number happens to be at. Up to the department head. And so that was very helpful. And so I know it seems. It may seem like a big jump, but I, I drew some comps and I'm not gonna name any names, I'm not gonna name any departments, and I'm gonna use approximations. And when I do this, please understand, I'm not criticizing other departments. I'm never gonna suggest that those departments weren't making decisions that were good. I am simply utilizing it as an information point, a data point to kind of make my points. Okay, so. There is an employee. Joan's been with the county for thirteen years. There was an employee in an office who's been with their office. Just a, it's been less than three. It's a lot less, but I'll just use three to kind of keep it big. And so there, that approximate salary, approximately forty four thousand dollars. Again, it's not exact and it's not exact on purpose, because I don't want it. You know, again, I'm not trying to pinpoint anybody or come down. Assuming three percent raise. On that salary. Per year. For thirteen years. Is seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And that's not even compounded, that's just three percent times thirteen. And so after thirteen years, that employee would have. Their new salary after thirteen years would be sixty one thousand five hundred, approximately sixty one five. And so. Is a thirteen percent bump? I mean, is it, it's a double digit number in county government? That's, I would consider that a big bump, I'm not. Gonna try to blow smoke at you guys, saying it's, you guys can determine for yourself what you think it is. But I just wanna put it in context. You know, considering her years of service. And, and considering. What my new number would have her add is not that far off from that number. Right? I mean, sixty two thousand dollars, assuming, again, it's not even a compounded raise, it's just three percent straight for thirteen years. Under forty four thousand dollars salary would get you around sixty two thousand. My proposed and a salary for Joanie's just shy of sixty five. And so it's a bit bigger than that, but. I don't think it's, you know, in that context, I don't think it's. That I'm about to. Bonnie's been with the office for sixteen years. And again, you know, assuming that three percent raise over those years, that's about the same. So that's kind of where I. Have kind of ended up with that number and why I'm comfortable with those numbers. I mean, there's other reasons too.
Thirteen years ago, you should have started at forty four thousand.
Joanie in twenty eighteen was the lowest paid courthouse employee. At lowest, the one on the bottom. And she had been with the county for eight years at that time. There was some confusion and maybe some. Passionate words between myself and the board at that time, because what happened is. It was kind of an oversight. We hadn't. I say we, the office, I wasn't the county attorney in twenty eighteen. But I kind of remember what happened and. The previous county attorney went to that board then and made a case. Joanie's been here eight years, she's the lowest paid employee. I want a budget amendment to increase her salary and the board said, okay, that makes sense and, and passed the budget amendment. What happened then was a mistake in paperwork. Even though it was approved by the board, the paperwork wasn't submitted to the auditor for change the rate. And so although the budget amendment was granted, just the nuts and bolts paperwork hadn't been submitted to just have the numbers change on her paycheck. And so a couple. I think a couple of weeks or maybe a few months went by before it was picked up on. And then so. I mean, I don't know if you remember this, but I think you had to cut a check. In addition to making the, the change, I think. I think what happened is. Yeah, I think the back pay from the, the moment the board approved the amendment.
Right, there was back pay.
Yeah, yeah. But what it looked like was. She got like all this money all at once. Because it came right on the heels of one of these where she got a raise on the fiscal year too. So she got like her back pay plus a fiscal year raise and it was like. And you guys, not you guys in particular, but the board then was like. Joanie's getting money hand over fist. I was like, well, I mean, it might look like that, but there's context here. And so. Yeah, and that's really no one's fault, it's just how it happened.
It just seemed like a lot Colin from, I mean, twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five, there's a fifteen percent increase. So we did, that was last year. Now this year, you're going for a thirteen percent increase for the same employees. It's like how. How much do you need to make them up? I mean, how far in your mind were, were they so far behind?
Sorry friends. It's not all about making them up. I also think that's their worth, that's their worth to my office. Their private counterparts make similar. Some make more, some make less. No, no, that's the last thing I need to do.
The average legal secretary in Iowa makes about sixty, that's what it says. And we always look at that to use when it works for. You know, that's what, I looked it up, Iowa average, so. And that's.
That wouldn't count Des Moines, like where your judge.
Right, it would also include Adams County, which is the lowest populated county in.
It includes yours in there.
They're not paralegals? Not working towards that? Or, do you have to take a test, anyone? Just schooling, not a test or I?
Frank, to be honest, I don't know. I think there is a certification.
You, your office needs.
Historically, the county attorney's office has never employed a paralegal.
But the other part of that is that includes the private sector. That includes the private sector, so they're not getting the benefits, the IFRS, ten and a half days, holidays. If you talk to some retired legal secretaries that have worked downtown. They walked out, didn't even get a gold watch. You know, they, they don't get any, any retirement. They sometimes don't have insurance. Those numbers are big when you're comparing apples and apples with a legal secretary down on Main Street and Broadway. So I think we have to take that into consideration when we're talking about it too, the, our benefits, by all, you know, sick days, comp time, all of that is a nice big package. We can't have the wages and the, and the benefits at the same time and still, I think we're talking about an apple.
I know from personal experience, I worked at firms that. Routinely gave out bonuses. And that's certainly not something we can do in county government. No, we cannot do that. And, and so I agree, I mean, we have to take things into context and into consideration. The benefits, of course, we have to take into account. But if we're gonna take into account things like that, we also have to take into account the perks that the private. Sector get that we just simply cannot do because it's illegal in county government. And that's the way it should be. I'm not complaining that it's illegal, but I'm just saying if we're really gonna get down, make these comparisons, let's make all the comparisons.
I'm gonna tell you where I'm going. And contrary to what we're discussing here. I, I don't like all the comparisons, this Lukenbach, Texas, keeping up with the Joneses, you know, you know the song. All right, I brought this up this multiple times. In the budget session. I wanna know what the girls, the ladies in your office are valued at, to you, all right? And they're valued to us too. I mean, we think they're important parts of the, I, I brought it up before you came in here that I. On the nights that I'm here late for EMA or whatever, a lot of times I see Bonnie in there working yet. So we're taking that into account. But we're also taking into account. What our tax base is, what our. The, the base is outside here. When you wanna compare, really you can't leave the Dennison Township or, you know, the Dennison area. So when we start comparing to Des Moines or whatever, we're really kind of talking out of context. So we gotta compare to what's going on in this town. I think that you probably are fortunate to have two of the best legal. Plerks. In, in, in the, in, in their area, period. I mean, they seem to really do a great job for you. Always got a smile on their face. And I know I'm probably hard to smile at when I walk in. So the. I don't want them overpaid though. And to me, I, on your paperwork that I initially seen was gonna have Bonnie in the seventies and. We, we've got department heads that aren't even making that. And so that's back to comparing. And what they're doing is different, but we, to me, when I start looking at what a clerk. And you know, I did take into account that Bonnie is a, what's your advocate, patient?
Joanie is the victim advocate. Bonnie is our, our kind of liaison to our, currently pro law, but we're transferring to car county. Which is our internal. Which is our internal uh file system, every piece of paper, document, motion.
Everything goes through that.
From the court, it that it goes into our, that's our, that's our.
Which Isaac might be coming up, another option for you too.
What's that?
Isaac might be coming up.
Yeah, yeah, you taught, you talked to me about that, I didn't know that, but that would be great because it's super expensive, right, yeah.
So, yeah, it's always nice to find some of this not super. But uh I right now, to me, as the clerk level, we're we're getting into super expensive. You know, that's when we start talking seventy thousand a year, I mean. I I I I don't, I I don't even feel good of good conscience, not that I don't value them, I don't want to ever make it sound like. I don't value someone, because I do, I mean, they're important to your mission and your mission's important to this county, but. I mean, you being one of the top five paid attorneys in the state, up in that category anyway, and top five percent, top five percent, didn't it?
Five percent, you said.
In that top five.
I I haven't.
He's ranked thirty.
Thirty fourth in.
Okay, well, so what is.
I'm the top third.
Top third.
Yeah.
Okay, well, and anyway, top third. And so that that jacks you up when we start like putting Martha on a on an eighty five percent, that puts her in the top third. And a lot of counties don't have a deputy, the our size, a deputy or a an assistant county attorney.
At every county our size has at least one assistant county attorney. Or at least.
What's Carol?
Our docket size, I should say.
What's docket?
Uh we have, how the cases we process, uh Crawford County is a busy docket.
Carol has part time though.
Yeah, Carol's part time, their county attorney and their assistants.
And the assistants.
Yes.
And so he does assistance.
There's there's two assistants that I.
But they also are are budgeting for outside legal counsel to fill the gap of say, he's not there for.
Okay, so the the all I'm getting at is. I don't want to do the keeping up with the Joneses, I think, on appropriate wage, but giving them an. I mean, every year that I've been here, we've gave them one hell of a raise every year.
Any of them boosted in the middle of the year.
Well, that was the one year where we did the five thousand dollars for each of them, you know, and then, so I mean. At some point. We we got to realize they're not made of gold, or we aren't made of gold, I should say, and and we can't just keep shaving a little bit off, I mean, we gotta. We gotta be practical with these raises compared to everybody else and we we might look like a cheap county. But I, don't you look at me, we might look like, he's grinning at me and you're looking at me like you are cheap. We might look like a cheap county, but this five sees as it is responsible. Um we didn't get our, we didn't get blistered with the dirty thirty, we didn't, and in fact, where there's probably, I I'd love to see the number of them, they got to go back up to three point five this year. And because we're responsible spenders with our tax dollars and we're responsible at how we. Tag taxes onto our property, you know, our property tax, um we're, you know, we're trying to do all kinds of things. And I I can, we we can't have too much growth at any one time, and this is a really big jump for us.
Colin, do you kind of have a? Plan, you know, three year, five year, ten year for your staff, where what it would look like where they're at?
Uh I no, I've never really done it like that, no. What I can say is I I share your guys, I understand you guys um are fiscally responsible and that's what you should be. And I would include myself that I also feel a responsibility to taxpayers as an elected official to be responsible with the money as well. And so we share that responsibility. I have. And like you said, Ty, you appreciate their work and you don't want to ever just. Don't feel like you don't, and 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 I get that, but I would say that I have a dual responsibility to. Compensate my employees. For what I think they're worth. And that's where this number comes from. I didn't expect you guys to pat me on the back, I mean, don't get me wrong, I have no illusions on that front, but that's where. We, that's where our responsibility, where I feel our responsibility is kind of diverse, we all share the responsibility to be fiscally responsible. I have a dual responsibility to care for my employees and this is how I propose to do that. At the end of the day, if I can't afford it, like I said, it's not set stone. I'm not saying it's going to be this number no matter what you guys do and no matter what you guys decide. But if I had my druthers and I would walk out of here with a rubber stamp, this is what I would want to have.
Understand, but you also.
And I knew I wouldn't get a rubber stamp, that's what I'm saying.
But we have to kind of look a little bit at what that department of four, the kind of wages between herself, Martha and your two gals, that's a big number.
And it used to be bigger, and it used to be part time, and you used to pay for a whole other office and a whole other overhead and a whole other electrical bill. And a whole other rent, not you in particular, but the board at the time. And so the the county attorney's office, since I've been around in this county since twenty twelve. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't know enough about other counties to say it's been atypical, but it's been unique.
We are.
It's been in a whole other building. Uh part time, some staff did county attorney work, some staff didn't do county attorney work and. Um then all of a sudden, they all did county attorney work and then next thing you know, we're over here. Which is fine, I mean, all these decisions were made, I think, with the best intentions at the at the time when they were made, but I get your point. You know, the the office of county attorney, you don't want to overspend. But historically, I'm not going to say passports did overspend, that's not how I would categorize it. But in the past, I would say that like county. Boards have paid more for less of their county attorney's office than this board pays now.
Yeah, that was kind of, when you when you look back at that, you would like to go back to do a little bit. I mean, I I don't. I would like to keep similar in the paper, I mean, you you're you're ahead of the general, you know, as far as. In your ranking on a state, I you know, I I hate to compare. I mean, I I see value in what we get, I mean, we we we've we've been told that you've got a reputation for going after certain things and being successful here, and that's important. And where your success is found is where we want to see you pay in success, so I mean, that that kind of things are of value, certainly. But uh to say the past board spent something and the one of the reasons that I'm sure that the board that went to have it full time and when Roger was there. Was to find, try to find ways to get the value and spend less.
Yes.
Yeah, to get, and and so I don't want to change that now, where now we're spending the same kind of money. And you know, I'm not saying we're going to get less, because I think we're probably get. We're we're happy with how you support us, I don't, I've never heard anybody complain about.
No, the way you drop everything and dropping to do whatever thing we ask is, you know, priceless, that's.
And I don't think the taxpayers get to see all that, so we, but we do take that into consideration, that that's been talked about numerous times. And but when we start to compare, if you want to start to compare apples to apples, you know. Then you compare Joanie and and Bonnie are more similar to what Michelle and Megan are to Terry. And when, if they're getting paid more than Terry does, and I'm just using the numbers that I see come out, you know, if they would be getting paid more than that, I mean. I we, I have to ask myself, am I being fiscally responsible, am I understanding that, I mean, what are they actually doing that's so much more valuable than the other ones? Uh there's a lot of questions that'll start running through my mind, I'm hoping you can get that.
So here here's kind of, I mean. Talk about comparables and this and that.
No one wants to do it, but we all do it.
I don't like it, but we have to.
Thirteen percent, fourteen percent, you know, we'll talk about Martha in a little bit, but yeah, they have, there are big jobs out here and I I get your trick. You have your number in your head, Colin, where you want to get them. To me, yeah, the second floor's kind of been treated the same even though you don't have deputies, you know, all the other ones do. They get a percentage of that deputy raise, if you look at the three offices with what the cop board with what we had, that's roughly a. I think a four percent raise for your staff. Probably roughly, roughly. I think to be fair. Just comparable in this floor, if we are similar to that, of what they got. Would be. Fair to all the staff on the second floor.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to argue against it, I mean, that that's a very rational comment and I'm not going to say you're wrong. You know, but I.
That's not with no double bumps, nobody put any double bumps in, it's just they're going strictly off of what they're. They got. And I know you can't do, I mean, you don't have deputies, but to try to keep everybody same, that's kind of where I'm at.
Um I will certainly keep all of this in mind um when I present my final budget. Yeah.
Sounds good. And Martha, I mean, that's, that's a big bite, she's. Tremendous at what she does.
And to me, I mean, if you're going to do, if you're going to do Martha, it's either one or the other, it's not both. I mean, we can be raising salaries by thirteen percent and Martha by, you know, um whatever that percent is, I mean, it's large percent.
Split the difference.
You know, so to me, it's. We're not doing both, but. I would do one, I I can see the validity about getting Martha up to eighty five percent.
Do you want to break it into like eighty one year and then?
I'm open to that.
All right, I'm just saying, you're trying to weigh out.
Yeah, and you know, I've thought about that too, breaking it up, um because at seventy four percent now, you know, five percent one year and five percent the next year would get her there.
That would be.
Um yeah, I've thought about that, but the budget I proposed, um I mean, also really. The budget I proposed had assumed the compensation board recommendation for me, and so I think. When I submitted her, it was an eighty percent when I submitted it, because it assumed an eight thousand dollar raise for me, which I know is not going to happen, but. That's kind of, when I submitted these numbers, I didn't submit her at eighty five percent, I would have submitted her, it would have been an eighty percent. But now with the new number, it's, I felt it was maybe more in reach to get her up to eighty five than it would have been. Had the board adopted just straight across the board the recommendation from the compensation board.
Everything else looks.
Oh, the only other thing I'll walk. Is that my employees work, well, besides Martha, who works more than forty hours a week, like myself. I mean, we work forty hours a week, our full week is forty hours. I mean, Bonnie puts in insane comp time, she doesn't get hit overtime, she gets comp time, so.
That's still time and a half.
It's time and a half.
So that's pretty good.
Are you managing that a little?
Let me, let me, let me run this by you.
We, well, we. We try to keep it at year's end, we try to get her down, yeah.
So so the Martha argument of eighty five percent, that she's your, like what would be equivalent to Terry, Terry, Mary or Amy over there, okay? Um since, I mean, we can't ask the taxpayers to right right every wrong instantaneously. And if this is something that should have already been, I'm not even going to argue, but. Look, like in Martha's case, I mean, what what would we think where she was at now, seventy?
Seventy four.
Seventy four, so I mean, if we if we did an eighty this year and an eighty five next year. You know, of your salary, kind of, to to make it more palatable to the tax asking, you see what I'm getting at? Uh I I I could go along with that pretty easy for Martha. You see what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I get it.
Same here.
And and that would catch her up and then that basically perpetually, that person would be paid, I mean, because once again. We don't require any education levels of any other chief deputy, you know, we just require them to be competent and be a good backup for the elected official. Or even in some cases, probably best person in the building, or the office, I should say, however, the uh. She has, what do you guys have, six years, extra, you know, four years.
Three years, three years of law school.
Four years, so seven years of college to do your job and.
That's just to get.
From my, from my perspective, most of the time you're you're relatively successful, we've had a few bumps, you know, that. I'm sure that life's going to get a hold of us at some point, and it does me every other week, I think, but uh. So I mean, for the most part, I think you guys are. Protecting the interests of Crawford County within the legal system quite well, so I mean, I I could go along with that. But I I I would also like to keep the clerk, the clerks in line with the. Clerks in the other one, I mean, because Michelle, I mean, she's got tons of of experience and education that's. Beyond measure benefit benefits Crawford County, obviously the owner's own, but I'm in the county. And and I would say if you go over into the other offices, you know, so you'll find the same thing, right, so I I I would like to try to keep them. In similar, not necessarily similar raises, but similar raised rate jumps each year, you get your, are you?
No, I I I hear you, but that's when I, I think that. As big as a thirteen percent raise may seem. When I look at it in context, especially compared to what I have marked employee C. Who, if they stay with the county for thirteen years. Would end up with a similar pay raise rate that I'm proposing for Joanie and Bonnie now. And that's, I know we don't pay long duty, right, and so that's not what this is about, but. I would just emphasize that it's just not, from my perspective, it's not that out of bounds to suggest the rates that I'm suggesting.
So then after that, would you feel like they'd be caught up to just cost of living?
I mean, that's my point here is that we've been catching them up.
Well, it's not about catching up, I mean, the the employee, well, okay, I guess. I guess in other words, are you ex, are you going to expect, when I sit here next year discussing a budget, are you expecting? Are you curious if there are going to be another thirteen percent? Okay.
Well, that's been for last four.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, I can't predict the future, I mean, I would. You know, as long as it's, you know, I'm trying to balance a lot of balls here, so I'm trying to keep it in line with other. Employees in other offices, even though we don't want to compare, but we all do. Um trying to.
The raise amount.
Right, well, I think the raise amount on a per year basis is is about the same, given. It would be if we made some assumptions, the assumption being a three percent raise over thirteen years. Um would end up with what my proposed numbers would be for Bonnie and Joanie in the round, I mean, it's not exact, it's an approximation. So I'm trying to balance, you know. What, how the county compensates its other employees, I'm trying to balance what I think is a fair rate. Considering the workload and work they do and the quality of work they do. Trying to balance the private uh section, sector. Trying to take into account their years of experience versus people who are newer to the county that get paid. Fairly close. Without the years of experience, not the same, of course, but. Closer than you would think, and so. I hear you, what you guys are saying, I'm not, these numbers aren't etched in stone. It's what I would want if I was to ask, you know, if I was able to grant myself my own numbers, which I know I'm not, and so. I expect uh the board to come back and ask me to make cuts. And when I make those cuts, I will take all these into consideration when I do it. And it would, I don't expect those numbers to remain the same, I mean, I'll tell you that. At least my proposed numbers, they'll they'll probably have to drop, because I probably couldn't afford it otherwise, so.
Right, because at the end of the day, the bottom line is what we said for you and you have to live within that.
It's it's a tough, you know, I think back, uh you know, how hard I worked to get where I was at at the bank. The gal that took my place, thought she was going to start there, you know, I took her down a little bit, but you know, doesn't. It it's not that, it's not an apple on apple where you uh start back and then get, you know, kind of. I worked a long time to get to where I was and they just thought it's, and so it's kind of, is there's a fine line there of of being able to figure out what it would be if you stayed there, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, and yeah, no one has a crystal ball, I mean, no one knows, yeah.
Colin, I I know we spent quite a bit on salaries, if there's anything else, though, that pops out that.
Yeah, I'll just kind of go over. Um I will tell you my last, the four, 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 zero, 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 maintenance and IT, that number's going to have to change. I recently had, so. We have a server in my office, it's a physical server, it looks like a really tall desktop.
What do you say, I'm sorry?
Four, 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 zero, zero, zero.
Repairs equipment.
Yep, it's near the bottom, twenty two thousand, that's going to have to go up to thirty five thousand, so, and I'll tell you why. Carpel, so it begins with this server, the server. Carpel, so it begins with this server. The server houses all of our information, all the things that I mentioned that our paperless file system does, all the orders, motions, notes, contacts, phone numbers. Is in this Pro Law, now gonna be Carpel. One of the main, other than Pro Law being, we're one of four counties in the state that still use Pro Law. And it's like an old Microsoft operating system where they essentially are gonna stop servicing it.
Yeah, they don't even offer it down the road.
Yeah, they're not, it's gonna, it's gonna be gone. So we had to either move the Carpel or just go back to a, a file, a paper file. Um, and most counties are moving to Carpel, have already moved. Well, Carpel comes with cloud storage. So that means we don't need a physical server anymore.
Yeah.
Uh, at least not as one as big as we have now. Our physical server is huge. It houses every data point that we have on our paperless system is housing a physical server in my office. That physical server has a light on that says, please replace me because it's old and it's breaking, it's dying. Yeah, there's, yeah, essentially, please replace me. And it's like ten to fifteen thousand dollars, replace a physical server. Carpel, anything Carpel related will now go in cloud. So we won't need a physical server like we needed for Pro Law, needed a physical server for the data to go into. That's all gonna be cloud storage. Carpel, I think if I had approximated, probably seventy-five percent, eighty percent of the data we keep will be our case, our cases, our criminal cases. But there is data that we use that needs to be stored somewhere that's outside of what Carpel will be able to store. So we still need a server of some sort. And so because our physical server is going bad, we have two options. Get a smaller physical server to house those data points that are leftover that aren't gonna be absorbed by Carpel. Or get another cloud storage based system, which I think, I don't wanna speak for Jake, cause I don't, I couldn't under, I couldn't, cause I don't understand what he says a lot of times. Uh, because it's just over, I'm not that techie, it just goes over my head. But my general understanding is Jake is moving the county or wants to move the county to cloud storage, all the offices. And so I would want that same thing for my office. And so that quote I got is twelve thousand dollars. And so right now, the my asking is twenty-three on that line. But it's gonna have to go up to thirty-five because I need a place for everything that's not Carpel. I need a place for that. I need a home for that.
Is there a home here at the courthouse currently that?
It's cloud storage. My, the home is the physical server that's dying.
Right. I mean, do we have a server that you could use that Jake currently has at the courthouse that could handle that? Or you wouldn't need to purchase one? Or not? You know, I guess, I, I don't know. I was just sitting here thinking.
I don't know what he has.
I can't, I don't know if I've asked him.
I think I would, cause I think he was taking a server offline that was just wasn't enough room in it for all the things that we have.
Right.
And it might, I think, cause he talked about wiping it and they, you know, and clean it better, wipe it.
I'll make a note.
Just talk to him and see, and maybe he can even help you find something economical. You know, that's very.
But I do know that Jake event, I, I don't wanna say no, but my understanding is that I think he wants to move away from physical servers too.
I, I think so.
Yeah. Not that we couldn't utilize one for a short term, like maybe next fiscal year, maybe next two fiscal years or something, but.
Especially if we already got a lot and the threat get you by.
Sure.
That's a lot cheaper.
Did, with Carpel, we did an amendment this year to buy the initial licensing.
The, that, yep. And we are in a final stages of migrating everything from Pro Law to Carpel.
And you kinda broke it over two years. If we did the amendment to get you started on Carpel.
Yep.
And then this twenty-three, now thirty-five with the server is finalized.
So that, the final number in four, 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 zero, zero, zero is made up of three big chunks. If, if you wanna use the thirty-five thousand number, there's the twelve thousand for the cloud storage, which we may not do if Jake has something that can do. Carpel annually costs eleven thousand, just like ten-five, so I'd like.
Give you the unlimited access to.
That gives you the life, the yearly license and the maintenance and the upkeep. So Pro Law had eight thousand dollars. It cost eight thousand dollars a year to license Pro Law. You know, it cost just over ten, just shy of eleven.
But you have to buy the server for Pro Law.
Yes.
And with this other one, it'd be all cloud storage, unlimited?
I don't know if it's unlimited, but I think it's big enough that we don't have to worry about it. And then we average uh, Anatomy IT about twelve a year is what I pay out. And it, it's just, um.
Let me ask you one more question, though. This is something that goes through my mind whenever we talk about the cloud. And you're.
I don't know if I can answer it, but I'll try.
But this is, well, this would have been a question I'd, I'd ask if I was you when you were talking to him. I mean, you do a lot of things that are sensitive in nature, I suspect, even some things are after the cases closed. There might be sensitive things that you don't want divulged. Is that right?
Yes, we have confidential.
So do we, yeah. So what about when something's in the cloud? I mean, is that a a?
Safe.
That's out there for the world to pick, to pick into. And you have, what's, what's your assurances on that, that you're, you're saying?
That there are security measures in place that I can fully understand or explain to you.
Yeah.
But I, I did ask a similar question. Um, and there are pros and cons to the security of the cloud versus a physical server.
Sure.
I mean, right now, if someone kicked in my door, they could plug into my physical server and just hijack my data.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, are these old doors? I don't have, I don't have a dead home. What, some of the, some of the keys in my office have a skeleton key, for God's sakes. I mean, it's not like, it stays, it locks, you know, you can't get in, but it's not portuguese. And so, um, there's drawbacks to having a physical server as far as security goes. But yeah, I mean, with cloud storage, could hackers get in there? I mean, I don't, I never claimed to be an expert, but I don't, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, um, again, um, hack proof. Um, but I think, I mean, I know there are security med, there are security measures in place to protect a lot of information.
Well, there's, I think there's risk in either one.
Yeah.
But you have confidence that you're probably not gonna lose us to billions of dollars in lawsuits that if somebody got all of a sudden.
Well, if we I mean, I would say it's probably just as likely if, let's say, I forget to lock my office one night as I leave. And someone's been hiding out in the courthouse and they gain entry and plug into my server and take my stuff. Um, you know, that could potentially open the county up to liability, cause I didn't take reasonable measures to protect that confidential data. Similarly, if I get an email from an address I don't know and I, you know, click here for your horoscope, Colin, I click this thing and, you know, all of a sudden I have this virus on my computer and they access the server. I mean, I would say there's similar, similar levels of, of exposure. I did have a conversation with Anatomy IT um, a- about that. I know that in my office right now, if I were to click onto a phishing email, um, there is a software that uh essentially locks down my desktop. And so it doesn't spread to the rest of my network. My computer might be toasted. Like if it's a ransomware attack or something like that, you know, my computer might be frozen, but it is quarantined immediately and it doesn't leak out and infect the rest of my office, the rest of the courthouse.
Yeah.
I mean, moving forward time, when, when you've got the federal government agencies, I mean FBI, CIA, IRS, state governments, hospitals, mental institutions are all storing stuff on the cloud.
Yeah.
That, I mean, is somebody gonna pick on little old Crawford County? You know, uh, county attorney to try to get some information? I kinda doubt it, but if it was a huge things, a lot bigger things are gonna be affected.
Yeah.
If they.
And Carpel is the most, most well-used software for county attorneys.
It's a prosecutor's software. I mean, they have a defense side software too, but they make specifically software for prosecutors.
I'm just a plan for the worst kind of.
I, I understand, yeah.
We, we did get half a whole years back and had to buy Bitcoin to pay it off.
I just had the question.
And you know, cloud storage is good for.
Really, all I was after is that you actually have. So I'm happy.
Yeah, all those data servers in Ankeny are served, because Iowa's.
If you felt confident.
Earthquake proof and cool weather, so they save on, on.
And low energy costs, we get a large percentage from that, uh, whatever.
See, I'm just trying to contribute to the local economy.
I do know, like with that, uh, ISAC deal, Joel and Andrew were talking about having maybe a hybrid where they have cloud, but they were gonna add potentially servers at the ISAC offices locked down so that it would be kind of a combination, if they get that far to develop a competing program against Carpel.
Yeah. Yeah, anything they can do to kind of differentiate themselves and make it attractive to counties, yeah.
Which they are coming to do an assessment next week. So hopefully they stop in and.
That's what I've got, the fifth in the morning, right? They're, they're coming the fifth next week.
That probably, that could be, but they'll make, anyway, they'll probably be visiting your office.
So, yeah, left, send it my way. Um, let's see some other highlights. So you think you're gonna go to thirty-five on maintenance and re. I'll talk to Jake as, as you uh suggested, and, and if we can get by, then, yeah, I'll try to get by, no doubt.
Good.
Um, some other.
He may not have any, but I don't know.
So a weird line for me is uh four, two, six, zero, zero, one, court-related services for indigent uh families. Four, two, six, zero, zero, one.
Yeah.
I have budgeted five thousand. I've used zero of it this year. Last year I budgeted four thousand, I used seventy-two dollars. The year before that, I budgeted four thousand and spent fifty-two hundred. So what that line is, is it's, uh, be very familiar to you guys. It is a mandate from the state that is unfunded. Um, so juvenile court sometimes has private, what they call private guardianships, where it's not anything initiated by the state or by my office, but by private citizens, where they wanna set up a guardianship or some other thing through family court, but the juvenile court. If those families are indigent, that fee is paid by the county. Um, that fee being the, the lawyer's fees, filing fees, the cost of that guardianship process is paid for by the county. And so I budget for that out of my budget. Um, I have no idea when a family or two or three will be indigent and want to have an action heard and before the juvenile judge. It's completely out of my control. I'm not even at the hearing. I don't even have a seat at the table, but I get the bill afterwards. Um, or I should say the county gets the bill afterwards, but I, I budgeted for that. And so like I said, one year I was over uh by twelve hundred bucks. The next couple of years I budgeted similar and nothing popped up. And so that's a weird line for me. Um, another weird line, or another big expense line is four, two, six, zero, zero, zero. That's corporate related services. That does, that's kind of the main operating line of my office. Um, a lot of fees come out of that. Service fees, expert witness fees, mileages for witnesses, publishing in the newspaper, which costs a lot of money, anything we do in juvenile court that we have to get proper notice for. Um, it gotta be published in the paper three times to perfect service on, a lot of times you can't find parents. And a way to give them notice in juvenile court is you have to publish it three times.
Why do you think that amount is down so much this year compared to last year?
So it fluctuates. Um, we haven't had any major trials in, in this fiscal year. Uh, not, at least not trials that would need expert witnesses and a lot of fees and stuff like that. Another one is we haven't paid for a private, private guardian ad litem. And so I've explained it before, in juvenile, in sex abuse cases involving a minor child as the victim, the state of Iowa allows essentially a court-appointed advocate. They called, they're called guardian ad items, and they're attorneys. Um, and they are not, they don't help in the prosecution. Uh, what they do is they're appointed as attorney for the minor victim. And so whenever there's questions that come up, like I will often in child sex abuse cases with a, with a child victim, I will file for um, things like limited duration testimony, um, remote testimony uh, away from the defendant, so I can give testimony away from the defendant. And there's, there's something in the works in the legislature on that point now. Um, but there are things that involve how I want the trial to go, and I wanna cater it to help, you know, a nine-year-old victim or, or younger talk about being sexually abused. Um, and then that guardian ad litem can take positions and file documents with the court on behalf of their client, because I don't represent the minor child. I represent the state of Iowa against the defendant. Um, and so this special advocate is specially assigned for that child. And the last one that I appointed.
Is that an attorney then?
Yes, it's an attorney.
Martha, does it do anything?
In juvenile court, there's, it's common to have a guardian, every, every juvenile case has a guardian ad litem slash attorney appointed for the children or the child. But this is specifically outside of juvenile court prosecuting sex crimes with children as victims. Uh, the last attorney I paid to represent a victim cost me forty-five hundred bucks. Um, and that it's important.
Are these all private?
Yeah, they, they're, they're private attorneys. They, they send me.
So you can appoint the Carroll County uh, attorney, then next time he appoints you or.
You know what?
Case that he's got.
Craig, I, I will say that's not common practice. It is common practice to special prosecute for other counties. I'm doing it on a few cases right now. Um, and whenever I need somebody, I will ask for a favor in return and they will take it. Um, but this guardian ad litem work, it is not common for county attorneys, don't mention. And, and frankly, I don't know if the statute would allow it. Because it'd be another, essentially another prosecutor, even though we're attorneys, it'd be kind of two prosecutors. I don't know.
So when you work for other counties, do they pay you?
I mean, they could, but uh, what, what Crawford County has instead is we work with two, three counties to trade forces. We trade cases. If they have a conflict, they'll reach out, say, you know, I, I, this is my brother's wife's cousin, and I can't take the case, would you take it? And if I have something similar, I'll say, hey, I got a conflict. I know when Martha first got hired on, she had a robust private practice. And we had a, I had to call in a lot of favors for people to cover cases that we would have otherwise been conflicted out of, or we were conflicted out of, because Martha was, had her fingers attached to that case. A lot of times I had success talking into other attorneys to kind of waive that conflict, so I could, I mean, Martha wouldn't work on the case, but I would continue in the case. Um, but yeah, I know, so these guardian ad items for minor sex abuse victims, they, they're paid at typically two hundred fifty dollars an hour, so.
There we go.
Um, let's see, uh, I mean, transcripts, depositions, that mailings, that, that does, I guess have postage, but that, that does a lot of our expenditures out of that. Our day-to-day expenses come out of uh four, two, six, zero, zero, zero. Books, this is why I brought the book.
Oh.
This is the Iowa Practice Series for Criminal Procedure twenty twenty-one. This is the most updated book I have, which is a compendium of all the procedures in ju, in criminal court. Um, it's got cases, statute, histories, on some pages, the footnotes reach higher in the page than the actual text. It's just one of those types of books that is just chock full of information. This book, I looked it up before I came in here. The most current version is nine hundred dollars for twenty twenty-four.
Couldn't a drawline just be cheaper?
If that could uh unlock the information without me having to read it, yeah, it might be. I don't know if our health plan would cover it.
Is that online now? That you can, so you could easily search?
So that's.
Throughout the book or?
I don't think there is an online version of this. Um, you find out in law school real quick that any, not to denigrate businesses in the legal community, because they do an excellent service, this is a very useful book. But it's made by a bunch of lawyers and they protect it very closely, and they make sure it's not leaked out. Um, and you can't really get it easily unless you pay the nine hundred dollars for it. Now, there are online, so much would have been discussed. Everything so far is about what I spend. I do institute cost-saving measures in my office. One thing I do for cost-saving measures is not use a system called Westlaw. Westlaw is by and large along LexisNexis, the mo, the premier case law research in the legal community. Westlaw is by and large along LexisNexis, the mo- the premier case law research in the legal community. It costs the the small package like a hundred and ten dollars per user per month. Uh, that's just for the basic package. The deluxe package is like two hundred and twenty five dollars per user per month. And that's just to access. Cases. I mean, so much of what happens in law is precedent. What what did Supreme Court decide in four? Well, this is similar to that or different from that, and that's a lot of what we do. Um. Instead, Martha and I use and always always have. Uh, the Iowa State Bar Association has. A different service. They call it fast case. In order to have access to fast case, you have to be a member of the Iowa State Bar. Which costs Martha and I total six hundred dollars per year. And so when we go looking for cases. I mean, the system isn't as robust as Westlaw because it's not nearly as funded. As Westlaw. But it's it 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 does what we need it. And so I I don't ever imagine. Unless something drastically changes with the fast case offered by the Iowa State Bar Association. Um, which we get by virtue of being members. Uh, we pay, but. Um, I mean, Westlaw is what the private in this uh firms will use uh for their case law research. Um, it's just, I mean, so. It's just more robust because it's better funded. But I don't, I don't use that. Um. I do have a small, I got fifteen hundred dollars budgeted for special prosecutors, and even though we try to trade cases as much as possible. That may not be possible all the time, so I have a small amount of money dedicated to that. I mean, fifteen hundred dollars is not gonna get you far. I mean, that'd be like prosecuting a school bus ticket if you needed to hire private attorneys to do it. Um. But sometimes, you know, even even offering a token amount. Might be enough to get. An attorney to come in to handle something if if my office can't handle it on on a conflict. So that's, I mean, there's more to my budget, but that's, we've covered. Most of all of it.
But sounds like we covered it.
Oh. We bring in money. Uh, in addition to cost savings, we have revenue. Uh, we have uh. In the past couple of years have started a county attorney's collections program. Uh, the state requires counties either have their own collections program to go after defendants that are delinquent on their. Fines, fees and and costs to and their from their criminal cases. And if we didn't do it ourselves, we'd have to. Farm it out to another county that was doing it, and they would take the vast majority of the money and we would get like a ten percent kickback. Uh, but we do that ourselves. Um, currently we have just shy of seven thousand dollars in that fund. Um. And for example, uh, uh, I don't know, we have a new. Kind of high profile case. It's a murder in first degree, class eight felony.
Reading about that?
We had um, there's lots of what's called discovery. Which is the state's evidence we have to turn over, and a lot of that includes a lot of audio and video. And so we just purchased over the lunch hour two, two terabyte hard drives. Cause we have an obligation as a state to provide this information to the defense counsel, and there's so many videos, this. The most efficient way to do it is just to buy a hard drive. And so we're gonna use our county attorney's budget money for that. And so. It's a, it's helps that we can. We can dip into it when we need it.
Yeah, looks like your revenue's up about ten grand.
It's been up.
All right, making money.
Yep.
Well, any other question or gone yet? Anything else you want to point out?
Colin, are most of your memberships and dues paid in spring?
Yes.
Okay, I figured it must be.
Oh, yeah, cuz that hasn't come out yet.
Seventeen.
Yeah, it hasn't come out yet. Yep. Yep, yep, yep.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, guys.
Keep that show for me.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I know I went.
Oh, no, no, this is what we need to do.
Once a year. Sit down and have a nice talk.
Well, good luck, guy. How many God got left? Just just Roger?
Maybe a few eyes and then.
Save all of the.
Well, have fun.
Don't worry, I won't be asking borrow that book anytime soon.
Oh, it's worth its weight in gold. So you you have to check it out. I'm sure the the library card for it.
My son told me I knew this financial book.
No, you weren't. You don't sit where you can see all that. I'm just looking at all them words on each page and I thought, oh my God, I don't think I get to have a painting. I'd be laying there asleep.
That book was four hundred.
It's so small.
Wow.
Crazy.
Roger.
Jer, it's been waiting for you.
Honey, what are we doing?
Hi, Roger. I promise this is just one thing.
Oh, you watched that.
After taste test, everything that comes in here.
Sure.
Let's check that pen of yours.
Yeah, we had a Taya Bonami come in from MRHC and uh Nika go over all the stuff, the views, things they hide and.
Hidden plain sight.
It's crazy, isn't it?
Yeah, we couldn't believe it.
Stuff that they had was.
Yeah.
It looks like James Bond must be developing it for him for God's sake.
Vape pins and just.
It's cute, U Branch.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Crazy. Number five. Here's his.
First official years, so be gentle.
We will.
Anyway.
Where'd that whip go?
I don't know.
Call the whip.
What's whip go? It's getting late for us, so we're not used to being at work all day.
Maybe that's good for me then.
Yeah, you'll be fine.
Gotta get out.
No problem.
Whipping the red pens.
We uh, this is, every year's a new experience with this.
Yeah.
Oh, you wanna start at the top and go down?
Yeah, we wanted to just go through. Yeah, so I guess the first one would be. The salaries.
And that's your deputies.
That's deputies. That's, yeah.
Just your guys like.
That's ten deputies.
Ten?
Ten.
Ten deputies.
All right.
Thank you. It's chief deputy, lieutenant.
Well, that's what your chief found out.
Yep, yep, all ten deputies, everybody but me.
So you don't break out like you're three.
So is there more? He's never had that.
Roger, is there more deputies than they had the year before?
No.
It was the same number.
Same number.
Okay.
Yeah, that hasn't changed for.
Ten deputies and then you.
Yes.
Eleven total.
They would like it. Are are how are we gonna pay that there's really not a union? How are we gonna do that? Um, what do we call line deputies? What do you call your guys that aren't in your management?
Deputies.
Just deputy.
But is Brent only one that gets a percentage of your salary?
No.
Or none of them?
Well, there's, yeah, Brent's eighty five percent.
Brent's eighty five.
Then there's lieutenant and and sergeant.
Todd gets like eighty five, eighty four is what, is that right?
Eighty one, I know.
Somewhere at seven.
Eighty four.
Eighty four.
Eighty four.
But you don't have anybody else in your lieutenant pool because that was Troy.
Right. So, yep.
So you you're gonna promote?
There'll be, there'll be a few more.
Do you got that figured into the budget, a replacement person at a specific percentage or?
Yep, yep, that's all included in that.
I'm not asking me to divide it.
Yep.
Tell me the person.
Yeah, no, I won't.
The position.
I won't, thank you.
I'm just wanting to make sure that you had that figured into your budget.
That is for your debt.
Go ahead and ask.
Yep. So, and then, yeah. So the wage, I guess we went off. I and I did change since our last meeting, so right now it still stands at. You know, the fifteen thousand for me. And then I think the deputies were fifteen percent. Um, everybody else there, so that would bump.
So you went like fifteen percent off of their current wage is what you did?
Yes, yep. So that's basically an average of eleven thousand dollar raise for them.
So I got seventeen percent from. They ate twenty seven sixty two number for the budget last year. The what you projected was nine sixty two, three hundred. That's a seventeen percent.
Okay, and I guess I just went into it. I just just took like like.
But that's just using the numbers of the board.
Exactly.
That's not bringing back to what.
That's using the what was what was approved in his budget last year for the number that he's putting this year, even though.
Right, so.
That number is not added.
But I'm gonna explain a little bit here to you. So in order to help maybe get their their wage up a little bit, so we get eleven floating holidays. Um, some, if if I want to give them an option of taking that paid, I mean, they're gonna get paid one way or the other for it anyway. So whether they get paid the the cash. Or take a day off, they still get paid for it. So if if they get paid for it, they don't have eleven floating holidays. They just get paid. Um, so that would help up up about five thousand a deputy. So that's in there as well, too. Then I also figured in uh fifty hours of overtime. Per deputy. So that's why that number is is probably a real reach for seventeen percent. So that's where those numbers come.
Your overtime is in that too as well.
Yeah, overtime is in that as well.
When you get paid overtime, not comp.
So right now it's up to the discretion of the sheriff. So but this would put fifty hours. That they would get paid.
Okay.
And they would have their option. They could, they could take it as comp.
Okay.
Or they could take it as pay. Some people let time off. Some people want the money.
Yeah.
Your overtime paid at one and a half?
So the fifty hours would be be straight fifty hours. So what, so what, say if they work, they work three hours, they get four and a half hours of comp, so it'd be four and a half hours of of overtime. Out of that fifty hour bank. So they don't take take their regular and and double, you know, time and a half on that fifty bank. So, yeah, so that's all figured in that.
And that's nothing new. That's why uh Stanny always did it too, or is that something?
No, so the the holiday thing, and I don't know, Jim, Jim never really told me if he he factored in the overtime for them.
Okay.
Um, the the holiday thing, no, that's not, that's just something I was thinking about.
Okay.
Um, if it helps bump up their wage a little bit. I mean, like I said, they get paid for it anyway.
That's why I kinda was asking.
Why not pay them, which would actually help us out because it leaves the deputies on on the streets. Instead of, you know, like, for the most part, we have at least two during the day, two at night. We have two mid shifts. Uh, somebody takes off during the day, then we move that mid shift up. So if somebody takes off for the holiday, well, then we would have five people out. Over that holiday period. So that's kind of the reasoning for that, just to keep more of us out there, cause. There's what, four of us now that have? Twenty five days, well, not be included, I guess, but twenty five days off a year now already. So then you add another eleven on top of that. So now they're at thirty six days off and and we work six months anyway a year. So I figured that, you know, that could help them out a little bit. Sort of bumping up their wages, so.
When you're getting more on, because you're working.
Right, yeah. So there's more.
There's value for that bump up. Cause you're getting, you're getting.
They're not just paying them more.
Citizens are getting value for that.
And and it's it's totally up to them. If if they want to come in beginning of the fiscal year and say, hey, I'd rather have my eleven days off, fine. No change in it. In the middle, you can't decide, well, okay, the first six I will pay six.
Oh.
It's it's one way or the other, just to make it easier on Amy and and myself, I guess. So at the fiscal year, either you want the time off or you want pay.
Okay, that's good. I was thinking that'd be a nightmare to, you know, not know until day before the holiday what they decided they're gonna do and.
Yep, so nope, that's gotta be decided before the fiscal year.
All thought out very well.
And so that's where that number came from.
All right.
Um. Gas, gas went up. Year to date, we're already at forty three eight. And we budgeted what, seventy five? So hopefully the gas situation will either come down or stay the same. Um, but obviously with, no, we're gonna be out on the streets, pardon. Gonna have to, we're gonna have to have gas, so. Um, the uniform, I bumped that up.
Have you thought about horse patrol?
Motorcycle.
Get some motorcycles out there.
Well, Dave, we got a few horses to get on. Yeah, there you go. Uh, let's see, the uniform. So right now the uniform, yeah, we're a little bit high because we hired two new deputies. Obviously, they had nothing coming in, uh, food, vest, uniforms, everything. So that's why the number's high, but also. Um, the way I budgeted fifteen thousand is I want to get back into. Um. What our uniforms are supposed to look like. So uh, the Iowa Sheriff's Association. This is not it. It's the green and gold. We should have green and gold. So that's what I want to do.
Okay.
New uniforms, new patches. I want to get back to looking like we're supposed to look like. As far as I know, we're the only, as far as patrol, we're the only ones that have black patches. Everybody else has the green and gold patches. Now, if they have like a SWAT team or whatever, they they would have black patches, but as far as uniform patrol. Green and gold, and that's why I want to get back to it. So that's why that's at fifteen.
Somebody retires, do they turn them back in to you then?
Yes.
I was gonna say, that's probably forty.
Most of them, and and really, these are. I'll just put out, I mean, these are ju- this is junk quality. They don't last long. For as many times as you wear and wash them and stuff, they they fall apart. So I know a lot of. Like Jack's uniform, these are obsolete now, so they've gone to a different brand. So maybe it's a little bit heavier or quite, you know, better cloth.
It's just a standard cloth, isn't it?
Yeah, that's.
Like it's a hoplin ripstop or anything.
No, no, so. So that's the reason for that. Um, schooling, obviously, one of my biggest things was I want more schooling. So. Uh, we bumped that up from fifteen hundred to five thousand. Um, just a different schooling that I wanted some the deputies to. And then let's see, mental health, shooting range, be the same. Uh, the auto and expenses. So that all includes, that's two F one fifties and the install. Of all lights with Caltech. That's all included in that one forty one five. And so the vehicles were. Uh, just over fifty thousand apiece out here at Team Ford, and then the installs were at twenty thousand.
You say you install many, getting all the equipment.
Lights, yes, yeah, yeah. That's just the install.
So is is there a? Moving forward, I guess, is there a rotation or what do you like to see as far as your replacement?
Well, I think we stick at, we stick at every five years, but um, there's one year we got to have three because we're eleven. Um, well, actually, we have a spare.
So if you do every five years, you do three a year basically?
Basically, yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're pushing for.
And how many miles you driving a year typically?
So typically when we trade in a vehicle, we're looking at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand on trade.
Five years.
So it and it's maintained about that. But now, and it could be more since we're gonna be on more.
Twenty five thousand miles a year you drive.
Twenty five, thirty, yep.
Will always be the F one fifteen is what you like.
I. I don't want all F one fifties. Um, you know, the the Tahos are probably a better vehicle that suit suit us better. Um. The back end of the truck is light. I mean, we're driving a hundred miles an hour and and with the Ford F one fifties are aluminum. You know, so the back end just just bounces everywhere. Um. And I'd like to like to move toward the Tahos, but.
How much more expensive are the Tahos than F one fifties?
Not not much. Actually, last time we got them, the Tahoe was cheaper.
So why don't you go with Tahoe here?
So so this time, staying local here, um, this this last Tahoe, I think we bought.
Okay, sure.
Was. Was right of, I think forty eight. So we're talking just a couple thousand. We're not talking like ten.
Where are you buying it? We buy Chevys.
Um, Carl triple later.
So like a Ford Expedition doesn't correlate with the Chevy Tahoe or?
Um, they do, but I think it's a lot more. I know the.
Okay.
The Explorer was even.
I remember hearing a pilot.
A lot more.
All right.
Explorer was one of the Tahoe.
A lot more than even, yeah, even the Ford F one fifty, so.
Be bigger.
So, yeah, the Tahoe's much bigger and it handles a lot better. So it's got the weight in the back. It's all enclosed. You don't get as much dust, you know, in the back, but as far as equipment wise, you know.
Yeah, I had it. Brian Roca, that's something that.
It's a truck, right.
That's huge.
Yeah.
Team Ford now.
Um, let's see where we at. Equipment.
Turn the chairs. They bought the Chevy dealership.
So the the five thousand dollar for the equipment, so our chairs, they've been. They're they're dropped, they're they're broke. Then we have people that we have in our office to talk to. When we bought them. It's gotta be what, fifteen years ago. Uh, we bought it for like twenty five bucks apiece and and they're just not.
Exenders.
They're well, they're just not of quality. So uh, we kind of want to update that. I mean, obviously, we don't, somebody falling backwards while they're sitting in our office talking to them. Uh, so the the next line, that's seventy eight hundred dollars, and if I did it right, so that's gonna be, that's a grant. That it's the uh. Step program, and it should be back on our revenue, but. If I understand right, we have to have it in this in order to, but or not, they're right, okay. So so our grant money is seventy eight hundred dollars on that. That includes five thousand of overtime. And then I think we're getting some educational goggles for like drunk driving. And then I think as a radar included with that as well. But. Um. Nothing on the next two.
The goggles that'll simulate being drunk and you can set something up.
Try to walk free.
Can you bring one? I wanna see how street Ty can walk the elevator.
Right. We can do that. Very fun. Um, next line, uh, weapons.
Knocked that down a lot.
Well, see, I think, I think what he did, he must have, he must have paid something else out of that. And I don't know what he paid. I think it's a vehicle, actually.
Isn't that weird?
That he took that out of that line item, uh and I don't know why. But yeah, that was sixty-seven thousand for this year's budget. So so eleven thousand that I put in there. So I want to look at um going to nine millimeter handguns. Um, ammo's cheaper.
What do you currently have?
Forty's.
Forty's.
Accuracy is gonna be a lot better with the nine, and they have the same stopping power as as the forty now. It used to be where people like, oh, the forty is better than a nine because of the stopping power. Well, it's 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 no different now. So obviously.
Are similar.
Yep. So so obviously, if we can improve our accuracy with nine millimeters, and and most likely, um, what we would probably do is, I know Jim had offered before, we could buy our own weapons payroll deduct. And that would probably happen here as well for most of the guys, so that money would go back into into the budget anyway, so.
They can pick.
Do they currently own their guns that they currently have?
Yep, yep. So we have the option of payroll deduction as well, or pay it out, and that's what everybody did. So every every weapon that we have, except for the new short barrel rifles, um, every deputy owns. The county owns the the short barrel, but in the county, we we can't buy those because they're short barrels and then they have suppressors on them. So those are strictly for law enforcement only. Calling card, obvious, those are the calling cards in the in each vehicle. The the MDTs are are computers that we have in there, like that's through Verizon. But I just bumped that up a a little bit. Um, you had ninety-five hundred the year before. But we may not even reach that. Looks like we're at thirty-nine right now, halfway.
Yeah.
Um, special investigations, dog food. That didn't change, uh health, they come up a little bit. Canines getting a little bit older.
You just have one dog?
Yep. And she's gone to the doctor here. Quite right.
About how old is she?
Eight years old.
What breed?
German Shepherd. Yeah, she's been, she's been having some. And the the shelf life, a working dog is eight to nine.
Yeah, I can say German Shepherds is about eight to nine years.
He's probably about, yeah.
What's your forty-nine thousand for furniture, new radio?
So so that includes written down here. Um, so three car radios. So the radios that we have now are are getting old. Go ahead, me, okay. I don't know if you had to get that or not. Um, so two new radios in in the vehicle. The one radio that uh Brent currently has in his truck is wearing out, so that needs to be replaced as well.
What do they run a piece?
Um, the fifty-eight hundred. That's what I had. And then.
And it's with insulation, what's what's?
That's all that I believe. Just, I think Kim had that, maybe just a little more for the insulation. But the the forty-nine thousand, so are my biggest thing and and I didn't know where to put it, so I kind of just put it right there. So our our digital alley cameras that we have in our squad cars, which record us doing the traffic stops um and sends it to our server here, they are junk. Um, they used to be good. Digital Alley used to be the one, the product.
What they're called, Digital Alley.
They are. The ones that we currently have, Digital Alley.
Okay, so just alley, just your.
It's digital alley. Yeah, it's our, it's our squad camera, yeah.
Squad cameras is what you call them?
Yeah, okay. So lately, I, Rod just replaced one today. We sent one in, they said, hey, we can't fix it. So th- they don't stand behind their product anymore. Um, usually, we probably send at least two a year in. Each time we send it in, it's about a thousand dollars a camera, just to have them look at and fix it. It's it's not worth it. They're they're just not, they're just not the quality that we're, that they were before. And for some reason, they just don't care. So the other amount is going to an Axon camera. That, the one that I have quoted would be a five-year contract at thirty thousand a year. But after that five years, they give us new cameras again. So it's just like our body camera. So these are, I think these are either on a five or three-year program. But obviously, something goes wrong with them, they fix it. That's all part of it.
Upfront is more of a cost, but overtime.
So total would be a hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars in five years for the five-year program. Uh, so it's breaking down to twenty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-six cents annually for five years. Or there is another basic, which would run you a hundred and sixteen thousand for five years, but at the end of the five-year life, they don't, they don't trade them in. Then we have to go back and renegotiate for new cameras. So if we were to do this, the uh the Axon Fleet Three plus TAP, which means they replace them every five years, is the route to go, in my opinion.
You still pay the thirty grand every year?
Yes, thirty grand every year for five years.
They just every five years, they give you a new camera.
Yep.
But you still pay the thirty grand.
Right, every year.
That's for how many?
That's for twelve. Yep.
I thought it was the one.
You know, it's kind of something, though, if you watch every, uh, the news or cop shows or anything.
Anything.
About that.
Well, if you don't, you don't have.
Hell, I'm gonna put them in my truck.
You're not required, no. But obviously, it's it's gonna save the county, save us if if there's ever some potential. Hey, this deputy did this to be. And vice versa. So I I think.
Because you guys have a body cam on.
We we do have a body camera, but then the the body camera catches us us up in the vehicle. The the car camera catches us going there. It catches the traffic stop itself. So and it it doubles as, like, if we ever do an O D V I, obviously, both cameras will will catch it, but.
How did this has anything to do with the budget? Do you have to turn that on every time your body cam?
So we turn it on in the morning, and then, yeah, we have to double-click it to record. It's it's not recording. Um, well, I shouldn't say.
Are we on body cam?
It it's a, if I would hit it now, it would go back thirty seconds and record everything thirty seconds prior.
Oh, that's kind of cool.
Also.
Wish my TV did that.
Boy, it should be nice to get rid of some commercials. Let me ask you a question, because I was actually watching a stop on one of them videos on Facebook one time where a sheriff deputy down in Texas was dealing with the person at the driver's door while somebody snuck out of the car around the backside. Are they ever working on technology where your car, like, I mean, if you've got a suspicious stop, where the comm center could be watching while you're there and say, listen, you've got somebody coming up on your on your blind side?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Boy, that would be something that might, I mean, just the thought that I'd had when I watched.
That you got the camera.
Yeah, they got someone watching.
And and again, that's that's another benefit to having that squad camera, because somebody comes around.
I don't know. That's the thought I had.
Yeah, no, I.
It basically gives you a second deputy in the car, but you don't have to pay one, right?
Yeah, right. They'd probably get pretty bored watching.
Well, it's good. And if people do that's out there, they probably wouldn't get pretty bored.
So that's where that forty-nine thousand.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, the next line, the nineteen thousand would be the uh MDTs, which are the computers in the car, which Rod just sent me some information that as of October of this year, Windows ten is no longer. Working, right? So we have to go to Windows eleven. So this here is a list. In the red.
Radio's gonna go.
No, these are, these are our computers in the office.
Oh.
The red ones are bad. Those those will not accept Windows eleven. The ones on the bottom are are MDTs, so we need three of those. Uh, this.
That's your mobile.
That's our mobile one, which two of them would go um into the new squads, and then the third one would replace the one that's bad here. Um, but that's another thing as far as the office computers, and I don't think I have that in there because I just got this like the other day. So but there is according to his email. So if we don't do it all at once, apparently, there's some options we can take for an extended security upgrade package. Which would cost sixty-one dollars per device per year, then the price doubles every year for a maximum of three years. And ultimately costs after the third year would be two hundred and forty-four dollars per device to have this extra security on it. So those computers run right at twelve hundred, um, three to four hundred dollars for setup for the in-house computers. Now, the MDTs were fifty-eight hundred, like I mentioned before. So that would all include the the software, new docs, um barcode scanners, printers in the vehicle.
Sorry, I asked a lot of questions. Does that, does Rod Bradley put, does he order those off for you and buy them? And then put them in for you and that type of?
He doesn't, he doesn't put them in for us. Uh, the in-house ones, let me take that back. In-house, he does. The the squad cars, when we take them over to get everything installed, they install.
But like your current squad car that you put on in, take it over somewhere else?
Um, so, yeah, usually, Caltech's pretty good about coming over and doing that for us if they have a service call here. Um, they would swap that out.
Okay.
A lot of these questions.
There is, and and unfortunately, I mean, we haven't updated. So these these in the red were installed in sixteen and seventeen, and the one in the vault, two thousand and eleven. So I, they're old and they.
Score desk will do any of that installing for the cars?
No, no, he hasn't. He hasn't jumped on that yet, which, you know, who knows? Eventually, he might. Uh, let's see, where are we at?
Over Texas the hell out of.
So where would you put the money for those computers? Where would that be in your budget if you would put it in? I guess what?
Um.
Would you want to stick in there?
Yeah.
So I think I wrote next to it, didn't I? So fifteen thousand would cover all the the in-house. And then I have the seventeen-four, it's for the three MDTs, or I have that in the budget, so I'd be another fifteen thousand.
So it's not under that equip tech service, the fourth one down, that you got fifteen grand and then?
No, that's that's just the tech service fees, like when when we have Rod come in and install things that are in-house computers or mobile or mobile computers. So that's basically Rod's fee. Um.
Well, so that's for your contract.
Yeah, yeah. And it's up a little, we're probably a little high. I mean, this year, since the change over, um, what between Gemini and.
Well, you go back to twenty-three, twenty-four, you're fifteen. This year, you're already at thirteen.
Thirteen, yes, we're over five thousand, but I don't know, I it'll be close probably. I mean, Rod does a lot for us. And with installing, you know, if we do get all the computers here, obviously, that's gonna take some time on his part to do all that as well.
Is he full-time for you?
Is he full-time?
Yeah.
As needed.
As needed.
Yeah, yeah. But it seems like he's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it seems like he could be on this.
Uh, let's see where we at. Radio-related equipment, um, he had two thousand on that. Twenty-five hundred radio equipment. I assume that's maintenance. Um, that'll that'll include maybe the Microsoft, um, for the computers, the C S I firewall license. And all that. That equipment service was for Rod. Uh, jail administration. That would be Janets, and then the two-eighty, that is for the three full-time jailers and then all the part-time jailers.
What are you doing for raises for him?
So they are.
Actually, that's.
I think it was almost the same, I think, right at the fifteen.
It's like eighteen percent.
I think.
That's like I go fifteen.
Is that what you got?
Yeah, well, for the sixty-six thousand.
For Janet.
Janet.
The other one that's.
You went down. You went to your two-eighty-seven last year to nine dollars, two-eighty. Lose some part-time.
Yeah, maybe more part-time.
Yeah, well, and I kind of went off of where we're at.
Two-forty.
Well, we're at two, we're at hundred and forty-eight now, so maybe that one actually should probably come up a little bit. Because we're at hundred and forty-eight now, so maybe maybe to three hundred. That one I overlooked.
It's just the question that I asked. Why would, why are the jailers at fifteen percent? I mean, what's the thought process?
Um, so from like like Carroll County, um, their wages are comparable to these, like their their new wages that they would be. It's I want to put more responsibility onto them, because I I do.
Make a cook.
Because the the problem I'm having is spending seventy-five thousand dollars at Ivy for food. Now, when I went to the sheriff's school the other day, so I was talking to the sheriff up in Emmett County, and I asked him, I said, do your jailers cook for you? He's like, yeah, and and they're comparable to about fifteen people per day, what we have. So what would that cost you a year? About about twenty grand for the jailers to do the cooking. That's fifty-five hundred or fifty-five thousand dollars cheaper to do it ourselves. So obviously, with the jailer, we're gonna put more responsibility onto them. Uh, they need a good breakfast, lunch, and dinner. That's the reasoning. Bumped it down.
That's why I asked the question.
So more responsibility. Where we at here? So the next is just life insurance. The health insurance, uh, the health.
Contracts with Ivy, Roger.
I don't know if there's, I don't know if it's a contract proceed. I mean, we looked around.
Like, would you, you have to buy kitchen equipment?
We would. We'd have to buy a stove, probably another refrigerator. Um, and there's room in the jail where the refrigerator is now. We can, we can move things around to accommodate the stove and the refrigerator. It it wouldn't be so bad with Ivy, but my problem is that the the quantity and quality of the food that we get is not worth this amount of money that we're paying. And then we've talked numerous times. And nothing's rectified now, and so.
I have a quick question about, somebody uh balanced the meals for you then and have them.
We would have to have a a dietitian. Yep, yep. Um, clothing, they had seventy-five hundred in jail. And they spent what, thirty-one hundred already? So I just kind of left that the same. The medical treatment, twenty thousand. Obviously, off.
On that, I think I spilled you this in past report, since we're an ACO member, and if you have to buy prescription drugs, we get a, you can just go.
Oh, really? Oh, you told me.
Through the ACO website.
Okay.
You just got, um, look up the ACO website, but I mean, you get, it pays for our fee if you use it.
Oh, really? Okay. Um, I mean, I hate to have that number up there, but we need to we had a few in there that that was cost us a little bit, and so I have one in there that still costs us some. Uh, the food prep, same thing.
So could we take that one out?
The food prep?
Seventy-five thousand. If you're.
But they gotta get there first, though. I mean, I don't know if I have enough in this year's, where we have, we're at thirty-three. Let me think about that one a little bit.
Well, you don't mean.
Because whatever it's gonna cost for the, you have the stove and and, you know, obviously, the food, we have to go out and buy. Um, but again, it's just cold sandwiches. That's, they need to have one hot meal a day. That's that's what the code says, so. I'll be looking into that a little bit more, if I can break that down a little bit. Um, protection, security services, left it at five. Uh, so the thirty-five thousand for furniture in the jail. I believe we are in need of a padded cell. Um, we have had inmates that, whether they're on drugs or if it's a mental problem, um, just uncontrollable inside their jail. They're banging on on the faucets. One actually ripped the metal siding off, um, siding, the metal, a metal plate off of the toilet. Um, set off our sprinkler system, um, last, with last week, set it off. But the problem is, and and we kind of, we move forward here a little bit. So in in cell number one, we cut the top bunk off, because inmates like to climb up on top bunk and like to jump down. That's a huge, huge safety concern. Um, so in cell one, we just have a single bunk. So we put the mattress on top of that, obviously, with caution to the ground. But a lot of times, we've had people bang their heads against the concrete. Um, if we had a padded cell, obviously, those are problem people. We could throw in there and we wouldn't really have to worry about anything with them.
Take one of your old cells and turn it in, so then would you be sure to sell for when those overbooked weekends when you just have?
So we house thirty-eight, so we're looking, if you take a single man pod or a double man pod, you're losing losing out on two people. Um, we've never had a total of thirty-eight in our jail. Um, we've never had a total of thirty-eight in our jail.
Your boss is thirty-eight in jail? We've never been there?
No. Well, I mean, we've had, we've had over twenty, but never, never thirty-eight.
Do we ever lease out to other counties?
We have, I think in the beginning, but I think that'll want by the wayside for whatever reason, I, I don't know. I, I know we've exchanged prisoners with different counties because of other people that are in our incarcerated in our jail don't get along with other people, so we swap inmates, but, um. You know, federally, I know federally, um, they pay some money to, to house them, but, you know, whether that's something we wanna look at or not.
I don't know if it would be worth.
Yeah. I, yeah, I think Carroll County does it, I think, they make, they make some change on it, so. But that's something to look at, but as far as prisoner safety, you know, especially when they're in that state of mind and everything, I just think a padded cell. And it, the only thing it would have is just a, a drain in the middle where they use, you know, go to the bathroom and, and that's it. And then pads everywhere else, so.
I hate to say, but I think you're seeing more in line.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. And, and the cell is right at twenty, twenty-eight thousand, but then you have the plumbing to redo it, um, an extra five to six thousand. What's that, I'm sorry? Um, the last thing I wanna do is, is put these people back out on the street. Where the, you know, the citizens are gonna be scared of them, or they cause harm to somebody else besides themselves.
Hey, you could be the first one to try to.
Is it a place I could just go and bang my head?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, so the next item would be, uh, my wage should be up to a hundred and twelve, that's up to fifteen. Um, secretaries, I, I'm not sure kinda what he did with, with this one, so this would include both Suzie and Amy. But I think previously.
Cause they was only budgeted fifty-eight thousand last year, and they've only spent thirty-three thousand.
I think maybe he had it with the jail, maybe that's why it came down, if I remember right, so. But otherwise, I couldn't find where he had, say, Amy, cause that's, that's Suzie's salary there, I believe.
The fifty-eight one ten?
Yeah, so I, I don't know where he had Amy swatted in, the only thing I can think is, is if he had him with the jail staff.
My Amy can tell you.
So. So this time I just, I just put them all together there, and that's including with their raise, um. Did you calculate that one, Dave? Was it fifteen percent of all?
That one was just hard to calculate.
Because it's one twenty-four and then it was fifty-eight the year before, so I don't know.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would bump up Amy seven, seventy-six hundred, and then Suzie would bump up to sixty-six nine from the fifty-eight. So, an increase of eight, eight. So that's what I do with that, that's why it's a little bit obviously higher than it was before. Then you have your life insurance disability.
Well, let me ask you this. We, we hired Amy because Suzie was getting ready to retire, correct?
Correct.
And now she's not.
Um, I, I don't know, she doesn't have a specific date yet when she's retiring. And I don't know the whole details of her prior to with Jim and everything, so, I would assume Suzie, yeah.
So when Suzie lives, leaves, excuse me, Amy will be the only one there?
Correct.
But there was only Suzie for ever.
Right, right, and she was, she was really, I mean, stressed with all the work that she had to do as well, so bringing Amy on actually helped her out. Um, but when, when Suzie does retire, yes, then, then it's just Amy. Then maybe we can look at a part-time or another one then. Uh, to the office supply, say the same. Um, photography, I bumped it up, we do not have a digital camera that is high-quality for, for high, you know, high case, like. The baby, the, the, the baby incident, let's just put that out there, but, so we don't have a camera that's, that's good. A lot of us just use our cell phones and that's something else I wanna get go away from, obviously.
Well, you have an officer that's primary or investigators for stuff like that.
We don't, everybody does.
Everybody's station.
Yep, so that's, that's the reason why the five thousand there for a digital camera. Um, so we do have something that, that'll take good photos, detailed photos.
So somebody will have to bring that to an officer that's investigating?
If, if it's, yeah, if there's something that a camera photographed, like a, a house, whatever needs, just like your, your, uh, your crime scene investigators, you know, they always show up with these big expensive cameras to get all the details of everything.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's what I meant, is I just, that would just pay for one.
Right, yeah, it just, we just have one. Ammunition, um, we did buy ammunition last year, so that's why it wasn't in there, but we are getting low on ammunition. My goal is to shore or shoot, uh, um, probably four times a year, about one time a year. Obviously, our weapon is an important weapon, if you don't know how to use it right, could be a problem, so I, I feel like we need to shoot more, so. Transportation, um, I think we're gonna start doing more transportation, then calling in the S center. The reason why we can't transport our patients to some other facility. Uh, we just took one, um, to Eastern Eye, we were here last week.
Do you require two to go when you transport?
Our, our cages are, are set up to where, um, it's just a quarter cage in the back, so they are there and they are.
Oh.
Right here, so, not a lot of room to move, but I mean, of course, they can scream and, and move around a little bit, but. Pretty sturdy plexiglass.
Never been in one.
You have?
That's your story and you're sticking to it? I don't know about Jesus, she's asking about heroin earlier, did I? Keep an eye on that one.
I just can't believe we have it in our.
Uh, publications, I just bumped that up a little bit, um, since we're at the fifteen, fifteen eighty-nine already. Um, postage, I think we have the same, telephone, bump that up, that includes, that's our I believe, our landlines, but I also wanna ask, uh, I know you brought it up the other day, so. Cell phones for the deputies, so I want, that way our personal cell phones stay out any court proceedings. That, if we take a picture with our cell phone, they're gonna, yep, I want your cell phone, they're gonna, you know, they don't need to go through all their personal information. So, um, I would have, I would rather have a cell phone just specifically for the sheriff's office, that way we can make calls to, to people we need to make calls and they don't have our personal numbers. You don't have to block a number all the time when you call somebody back, it's a law for service. Um, and I think that was, talking to Michelle, it was like fifty dollars a month, and that's a free, uh, iPhone fourteen. Fifteen, one or two, so, and the phone bill is kinda outrageous anyway. The, the landline, I think that's something we're also looking at changing maybe.
Have you talked to Jake about, we made that change to um, the new phone system within the courthouse and local health?
It's internet-based.
No, really, but we, we just have.
I don't know, I, I, I thought.
Yeah, that's, we're trying to get, get away from frontier, so, and we had a meeting, it was last month. With, with Tony, Rod, uh, Dwayne, myself, and we have other options that we were looking at as far as.
Just.
Get rid of frontier.
So since we already have a contract, they might be cheaper just to add on to it.
Sure.
I mean, just sort of.
To look at into that.
Yep. Uh, schools for administration, like, we left the same. Um. Is that insurance?
That's insurance, you didn't have it before?
Yeah, I don't know why.
It's probably paid somewhere, it's paid down here.
Yeah, you must have taken it out someplace.
Comes out as supplemental. It probably should be, it's supplemental, down here. Got, made it twenty thousand, I'm sure.
Insurance. Why do we have, yeah, why do we have two of them? So, so, okay, we'll cross that one out. We're at twenty, so that should be enough in that one then. For the one year, it was sixteen thousand, why? It's twenty-three, twenty-four, went from five thousand to sixteen thousand. And then ten thousand last year, but is that paid at the end? That, why, okay. Uh, membership dues, five hundred stayed the same, office equipment stayed the same. Non-legalization of dogs stays, well, went up a hundred dollars. Flex plan stayed the same. Press papers, health insurance. Obviously, that went up a little bit because of potential rate increases. Secret investigations. That's just fine, nothing.
Permit to carry, you got seven thousand, but we haven't spent any the last couple of years.
So, okay, so that's, that should be part of revenue, that we don't spend, where you have.
It's sixteen.
Go down, pass for road to carry fund, you have permit to carry.
Seven thousand?
No, no, expenditure, expenditure. Seven thousand, you have to spend on, spend it for two years, and it's its own fund, we don't levy for that. They only spend if there's. Out of the fund, but so it's not a general services fund.
What would you spend money for making a lot of that fund?
So, so we used to have, we used to print our own permit to carry, so that's, we don't do that anymore, that's sent, it's all sent to sent to the point now, so I don't know why he had it in there, I just left it the same, cause I didn't know what he had, so. I would, yeah, if we haven't spent anything, I.
What do you think, Jerry? Better than me. Just adds to the bottom line.
It's not a tax.
I'm good for a year yet, I have. So this year, you don't make them here anymore?
It goes down. Yeah, yeah, Suzie does it all, Suzie and Amy do it all online, and then sent to the point. Yeah, it's a good question, I don't know why that's, I, I would think. I would think that you take that out, it may have spent for the last two years, right?
Same way with judgments, damages, uh, twenty-five thousand, zero spent, twenty-five.
Which one's that?
That's true.
I think you have, you'd have to keep that. That one, and the one above needs to be in there too. The fifteen thousand.
I can see where you use some of that.
Both forfeiture. Yes, yes.
And you have revenue budgeted.
You say it has, stay in there, I just, um, dip right past it.
The revenue.
You did have quite a jump, Roger. He did, two-nine from two-on, two.
But again, I just.
Page seventeen.
And a lot of that is, is, is wage itself, and in computer stuff, but.
Yeah, there's a, a lot of upgrades.
So are you gonna get us the numbers based on that, in a sense, does the board have?
I mean, just without the changes in the numbers, which we changed some, we added some to, some we made a little smaller, but budget last year to what's proposed this year overall is a thirty-one percent.
I just feel at some point in time, we need to start.
Right, I know.
Keeping our guy.
Sheriff, sheriff in town, so to speak.
Well, and that's.
But, uh, that you wanna make some changes in that office, and I can understand, appreciate that, that you've seen some things that like, man, this should be done, this should be done, but I'm not sure if I'll wait till I'm sure of what I've done.
Right.
Understand.
I mean, I mean, ultimately. You know, we wanna treat our guys right, and, and staff right. Um, I mean, we, that, that's a whole discussion we've had many, many times anyways, but I, I just. With all the other agencies that are paying more. Anymore, you know, you don't have to live in the county anymore to work there. To lose the people that we have, which a lot of us have. What, maybe seven, eight years in, you know, except for two new hires, you know, but. I just, I just feel like we need to, to retain the people that we have, um, obviously, you know. We're gonna move the sheriff's office forward. And there's a lot of things that, that I wanna do, there's a lot of things that the guys wanted to do for our schooling and, and bring that back to the community. Obviously, our, our main focus is protecting the community, and that's the way I look at it. I guess, we, we have good staff, we have great staff, and they just need to be, uh, you know, I guess, paid what you're due. Um, we've been, we've been hiding the eight ball for so long. Um, that's where I'm at with it, you know. I will check on the the jail, if we can cut, cut from there, if we do go with.
I think you need to get the salary situation straightened out in the jail as to which one is Amy, which one is Suzie.
Yeah, I'll.
If they're included in the other one, cause that's, I mean, that's sixty grand right there.
I know the, so the jail hadn't covered two-hundred-and-ninety-one shifts separate from the full, the four full-time jailers. Um, so that's something else I'm looking at, do we need to bring on more full-time jailers to help with that? To, to cut down that expense a little bit, maybe on that, um. I would really love to have two jailers on at the same time, I would like to have a male and a female there. Uh, you got a female? No, no, but, but just in case, if you do, we have to have a female jailer. Mm-hmm, uh, but the surrounding counties, they all have male and female there both. Uh, my biggest thing is, like, when we come in, we bring somebody in, we have to wait until they empty the pockets, we have to pat them down, they change, we have to pat them down again, well, that's taking us away from, from the street. Now, if we had a male jailer in there, drop them off, here's your charges, the male jailer takes care of the males, females take care of the females. In and out, otherwise, we spend probably, on average, probably half hour, forty minutes, I'll be, every time we bring somebody in. So, but I just, you know, the, the surrounding counties, all, everybody has, has both male and female. And that's just something else I, I kinda wanna look at as well here in the future.
Do you have any male jailer, I, I, I just in my mind, I'm thinking most of them were females or males. Male.
Do we have any?
Yeah, male.
No, we have all female noise.
That's what I, yeah, it's just kind of, I was thinking, well, I'm missing.
Yeah, no, all of ours are, are female jailers right now.
Roger, looking at the revenue side, there's quite a few higher numbers, but the activity or like the year before isn't close to those numbers.
Need papers.
There is a lot of papers.
Okay. Which one do you want?
Oh, just, let's just go down the line, I mean, you look at like other sheriff's fees, you got three thousand, but activity zero, last year was zero, you know, there's.
Which part of sheriff's fee? Well, I'm looking at, so, so it's thirty thousand.
Well, it's the top line, it's the.
Oh, other, okay, third one down?
Yeah, I'm just going down the line, I mean, there's some, there's a number of them that haven't collected anything.
So I'm, I'm thinking the other sheriff's fees may be all included in the actual sheriff's fee down, if you go down halfway about not quite three quarters of the page, um, that one's just specifically for abandoned vehicles. So. Uh, must not have ever had anything logged under that particular one. But I know we've had abandoned vehicles.
Okay.
So maybe it's just a matter of where it was put, with the chip I put in there.
Maybe some's creeping.
Uh, the.
Contract law, you have it eighty, law enforcement, eighty thousand.
So that, that, that one I have to change by I think that'll go back down to fifty-five thousand for the next year ahead. So the next year, so that'd be at fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
Um, that's just, uh. Taking a vehicle exchange for a service contract.
Yeah.
So. Prisoner work release. Prisoner work release. It stayed the same. Room board, that's something else we're gonna look at, um, never, since I've been here, we've gone after the prisoners um, for room board. So we're going to entertain that, uh, so everybody that has stayed in, in jail, uh, we will be sending out a bill to, to see what money we can recuperate now. I don't, don't know how much we'll get, obviously, but um, that's something we're looking into, and I've been in, in talks with Colin, and Colin's office is the one that has to to file that and send it out. So, so that number may be even bigger yet, depending on how many people reimburse us.
So like a daily fee, is that what you're thinking, like?
So, I think right now it's at, at thirty dollars a gay.
Three in the morning?
Yeah, and that's, that's pretty, and we spend seven, seven dollars a meal, there's twenty-one bucks there, so we're making nine dollars a day. It's just, but I think we may look at bumping that up, maybe, I think I can go up to sixty. Um, but that's something that we need to go after, I feel the taxpayers should be paying for those that are incarcerated here, obviously, their, their meal and room board, so. So we will be checking into that. I know the jail has been working on it, they have been all separated year to year for the past five, six years.
Jail is not a big moneymaker.
No.
No intended to.
No.
Well, it could be, I mean, if you take it on the. It was, though, everybody in the county, Dan, they're like, some are gonna charge him, right?
Plus their medication.
We have some private jails out there, maybe.
It's intended to promote safety, this is one of them, to, the cost of doing business jobs.
I know. I need. All right.
You're gonna say, like, on that, most of your people that are. So Terry in jail, there's estimated.
You got any pockets?
No. General fund.
And on top of that.
Or why they're in jail, they're even gonna make less if they have it. Make sure the levy is right. And, and we make that estimated. Income. And subtract that off of their expenditures, estimated whatever budget, to get what the tax asking is, is that what you do?
Kind of.
And then the same thing for every.
That's why we don't want those revenues. I mean, you're never gonna get them right on the, on the money, but.
There's a number of them here, like thirty-five thousand for other.
Going, so, and a lot of the jails now. Ankle monitor.
On the last page.
See, that's what I think. Exactly.
I think you could probably do a lot more of that.
Property, we always estimate.
Thirty-five thousand, no.
Is that one of those that has to take?
Charges for service.
Property.
But that's the forfeiture fund, so that's not a levy. We don't levy that.
Has to be there in case they bring something in.
Where do you see that it says forfeiture?
And that's also.
There's a lot of different ones.
I know, that's why I hesitate.
Zero, zero, four, three, that first number.
I'm on page eleven, and I'm looking at. Eight, five, two, zero, zero, zero.
Zero, zero, four, four, sale of law enforcement forfeiture fund.
We estimate thirty thousand, we've never brought even ten dollars in.
Cause there any.
If it's a forfeiture, I think.
Yeah, right.
Just by that number in front of them.
Just by the zero, zero, four.
Twenty, eight, five.
That's the fun number.
So that, that money has to stay in there in case.
So if I was a forfeiture, is the sheriff's department the one that has the forfeiture fund?
No, the attorney has.
My understanding.
And it's zero, zero, four, no.
You just kinda try to take the easy ones that, you know.
Guess I could look, I got them right here.
I can look too.
Yeah.
This is for, let's see, four, five.
Zero, zero, four, five.
Forfeiture fund, county attorney, it's different.
Real low. Key in there is to know exactly their forfeiture funds, I guess, is by the number, I guess, is it zero, zero?
There's a title there, zero, zero, four, five, forfeiture fund, county attorney.
Okay.
And there's a title on this one.
It's on the zero, zero, four, four, oh, maybe I need to keep looking.
Yeah, all the funds that are different have a subtitle or a.
Four, four is forfeiture, right?
One of the forfeitures, there's a four, three, that's forfeiture also. Yep.
No.
All right.
We went over it pretty good. You're looking at a few of those things.
Yeah, I don't think we added the fifteen in anywhere, do they? The office computers?
I don't remember seeing that, you know, you were talking about it. You had it on your. I added it by pencil.
Which line or?
I just put it, oh, which line?
Yeah.
Um, I didn't, I just stuck it in the line that was after, right below the fifteen thousand, because that was empty. So I just wrote in computers and put in fifteen thousand.
Under miscellaneous?
Yeah, yep.
So, yeah, so we'll probably do the.
Yeah, I did mine right under equipment tech service, I just crossed out miscellaneous and put new computers and fifteen thousand.
All right, and you have to look back at that, Suzie.
Yeah, yeah, I will, I'll stop over here quick to find out where it came from.
Somebody has that answer.
Yeah. Definitely came out of someplace, but.
Are you gonna do anything, Roger? I'm just curious with the website and the sheriff's portion of that?
Yes, and actually, I talked to Jake, Jake, Jake was supposed to be adding the sheriff's office onto the county website.
Okay.
Um, so once we get, I'll get together with him more, I mean, the sheriff's office itself has a Facebook page. But I have talked to Jake about putting it on the county.
I just noticed, I noticed it last fall, I guess, and I thought, wow, Roger's coming in, just they don't know.
Yeah, I don't know why we haven't been on there.
But there's a, like, I was, and you should do it, I went on Cas, I was on Cas County's website for something, and I ended up on their sheriff's page. But I could just couldn't believe all the information that they provided for the public, e- even as to forms that, you know, if you needed to get forms, you could get them online there, I just thought it was a really good website.
Nope, that's all coming.
Okay.
So definitely. All right, you guys go home now.
We're getting close, these are, we're not used to full hour.
Our attention span, we're kinda like kindergarten, it's only so long, you gotta go.
Some of us are just thinking.
Thank you for your time, Bill.
Thank you, Roger, a lot of good information, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Yeah, for that, be safe out there. And get a sheriff's shirt for God's sake.
Back order.
So where do we wanna go next?
What haven't we done yet?
No idea.
What are you gonna do with that?
Colin wants to talk to you guys again. Okay, well, send them in, we're in.
We're in break? We're already frustrated, so come on. I mean, there's no way we can do that.
No.
No.
I know he'd like to, but there's still.
He's ashamed of his salaries, for one thing.
Uh, break them.
I don't think he wants to.
I know he doesn't.
Especially for the jailers, so.
That's crazy, sorry, it's crazy, Suzie.
There wasn't any point in arguing it, I think.
No, I know, I get it, I get it, we all would love to do that kinda stuff.
His first year, he doesn't really grasp all this, you know, we gotta figure out.
They're taking it all. Their kind of wage, but that replaced about a four percent.
I don't want him to get discouraged, he don't support it. But that's true, and of course, of course.
Yes, sir.
I forgot one thing, I could, I was hoping I could pick your, uh, is it too late to mention one last thing about my budget?
You're gonna pick our answers, not much left.
It's dumping on the.
Not much left.
The department heads recently met with, uh, Jake, and he brought in a security advisor from SISA for both physical and, uh, internet security of the courthouse and our offices. And it was a discussion on physical security, in a small discussion specifically on active shooters, mass shooters. I didn't budget it in my office, uh, I did budget for a buzz, a buzz entry. And we didn't touch on that, but I do wanna try to.
I talked about that.
I talked about it last year, I haven't done it yet, if it's in my budget this year, I'll do it, if not, I wanna do it this next fiscal year. But, um, it's gonna be a big project, I don't know if it's doable, and it's probably not gonna happen this fiscal year, but I do envision and want for my office a physical counter, like, much like Terry has, uh, and glass, uh, preferably bulletproof glass. Uh, but of course, we would have to, I, I haven't filled in any kind of estimates or numbers or anything like that. But that's something in years to come that I will be budgeting for.
That'd be a capital project, you wouldn't wanna budget in your.
Okay, so maybe Terry could walk, walk me through it better. It is a high task.
We've been trying to figure out where we're going.
That kinda stuff, they built Louise's counter.
Yeah.
And her gate and stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if they do.
Well, I heard that engineer wanted to get rid of their counter.
Maybe you could take.
Yeah, the engineer's office is getting rid of their counter.
I think we'll transfer upstairs, I'll take it, but I don't, see, I don't know, with the rules that we have in place for a courthouse, I'm sure I'd have to work with Terry and get with a certain crew to have a big project done like that.
Took a piece of kit Lauren behind there. Or sort of dollar amount, that it becomes a capital project, or just the nature?
Well, it's, you're improving the courthouse. We're improving the courthouse, so we'll do it out of the courthouse, so that makes sense, to not plug it into another, because those line items tend to not disappear.
So this is very preliminary, so maybe what I'll do is I'll work with Terry, you know, not anything rushed, and maybe float out some questions to some contractors to see what, something like that might cost.
For your key, hold on a little, I'm making enemies, we got a little more time to make.
Unfortunately, with my role, I, that's not, the more effective I am, the more, more people don't like.
Jake is working on one of his main projects for next year, is a keyless entry.
Yes.
Access, yeah, access, so I don't know, I don't get tied into.
That probably.
Entry to your office.
Uh, yeah, because we would be keyless to get in as a, as staff, but then to let in the public. I mean, these other departments, we talked about this, that, I mean, Sherry can't really close her door to the public, because of the nature of her business. You know, I have to deal with people, but I think it's not on the same type of scale. Like, if, I, I think I have more control over who accesses my office than like even Terry and Sherry, or even any other department, really.
You wanna buzz them in?
Yeah, and at first, it was this security person from, uh, the SISA, who, under the whole line of security, to talk me into it, because I, I told him, I was like, who am I not gonna buzz in? I wanna buzz in everybody, like. But then he pointed out to me that if you have a true active shooter in the courthouse, any small deterrence could make the difference. You know, if someone has to struggle with a blocked door versus turning around and going somewhere else, then that might be deterrence enough, I said, well, I hadn't really thought about that. But this guy, I mean, this is what he does, he, he says his job is for the Department of Homeland Security to come to Iowa and go give these pitches to people about, you know, what they consider.
And we're gonna start with the exterior doors next year for an IP department, believe we're moving eventually inside.
Okay.
Is the plan, long term.
Taking a long time.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a big project, no doubt, especially if, if it's.
It ain't cheap.
Envisioning every, everything inside.
But we kinda assist them together.
We wanna tie it all together for an active shooter type of situation, as lockdown. You know, can you end up having, getting the shooter locked in a building, or at least having him out in the hallway and he can't get into nobody's office?
Yeah, yeah.
Because everybody's locked down.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so you're kind of already on, on your radar, or something like this, okay? Okay.
To answer your question of who you wouldn't buzz in, it could be a proper county supervisor.
Oh, man. Never.
You're the one in yellow.
But, yeah. Okay, that, that's all I had, I just wanted to mention that, okay.
Longer the day, we gotta cut up a little more.
I know, I know, I know. This is, I would, I like to get up and move on a little bit.
I don't know what else. I think we've hit most of the small stuff.
I think we're good.
For the most part. Zoning wise, I stepped on the other day.
Yes, no.
We didn't do zoning, did we?
We didn't, we don't know what to do.
It's budgeted, it's in there. So that's all it matters, it's budgeted, whether it ends up. Ten.
Ten?
Yeah, seventy-five hundred for salary is what it's up to. And then eight thousand for office supplies, I don't know what that, I don't know what office supplies it is. To be honest. No idea.
Go see public health next week.
So this is not levying through the assessors.
No. It's own.
This is a separate.
Yeah, this is a general fund. Zoning is general fund. Yep, Tuesday will be, um, Tuesday after your board meeting, probably before, uh, any kind of break, I mean, you'll have, we'll have, uh, public health.
Oh, yeah, that's a big, big one, yeah.
That is a big one.
Yeah.
It's in here, the numbers are in your book, but they will be.
They will be adjusted.
Because those wages look extraordinary, you think?
I don't know where the, I don't know who uses it.
Um, are we still being recorded?
Unfortunately.